City Council Public Hearing will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Here.
Repoza?
Yep.
And President LaLagui Libo.
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. You could sign a motion. Counselor Joseph Kamara will not be here this evening. He is out of the country. Can I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open.
Second.
Motion to open the hearing made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Item one, underground conduit and pole locations. Massachusetts Electric Company for Underground Conduit and new solely owned pole locations as follows. Airport Road, National Grid requests to install four new riser poles and two sections of two to four inch conduit, 50 feet and 100 feet into existing Manhole Two on Airport Road, in accordance with Plan Number 297-49105 dated May 14, 2021. Are there any proponents for this pole location? Any proponents? Proponent? Do you want to come down to the microphone and give your name and address for the record, please?
My name is O'Brien Cortez. I'm actually a contractor with TRC who did the design work for National Grid on this job. My address would be 155 St.
That microphone working because we can't hear him.
It is. Can you stand closer to it?
Of course. Hold on. How's that? Is that better?
Better.
Better.
Okay. So, as I stated, I'm O'Brien Cortez. I'm with TRC. We're the contracting group that did the design for National Grid. My personal address is in East Providence. Our office is located in Franklin. Just here to state that the purpose of the work is just to loop-feed the transformers located around Airport Road to the businesses located here for further reliability. The purpose is just in case a line goes down, we can continue feeding all the other transformers off the line from another transformer.
Thank you. Are there any opponents that would like to speak? Any opponents? Seeing none?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close the hearing made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Item two is a curb removal. Do you have a motion to open?
Motion to open.
Motion to open the hearing made by Counsel Repoza, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The curb removal is from Michael Tupin, 452 Oak Grove Avenue, for the removal of curbing as follows. City Engineer has an existing 15-foot, 8-inch driveway and is requesting removal of another 10 feet, 4 inches to the north side of the existing opening for a total of 26 feet. The city engineer has recommended the following condition: New concrete driveway apron should be installed with appropriate ramps on each side. Calling any proponents? Are there any proponents? Would you like to go to the microphone, please, and give your name and address for the record?
My name's Mike Tupin. I live at 452 Oak Grove Ave. I never widened the driveway when we've been living there 38 years. The driveway has always been a one car because I had trees there that I never wanted to cut down. The trees have died, and it'll make my life a lot easier to be able to just pull straight in and out of my driveway. I'm getting ready to retire in a couple of years. I just want to make my life easier.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Seeing none?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing made by Counsel Kilby?
Second.
I'm sorry.
I just would like some clarification since Mr. Tupin was here. It says that the city engineer has recommended the following conditions. Not that he stipulated that. I'm just wondering if he thought that the city engineer's recommendation was a good one.
If you would like to go back to the microphone, please.
To, I think it's to put an apron to be installed.
Yeah, we plan on putting the concrete back the way it is right now.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Motion to close made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Repoza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. City Council Committee on Finance now come to order. Madam Clerk? Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Here.
Repoza?
Yep.
And President LaLagui Libo.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
First item is citizens' input. We have several people signed up to speak. The first is Robert Guinan, 258 Savoy Street, and the subject is Veterans Advisory. You have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Robert Guinan. I live at 258 Savoy Street. I am the commander of the Fall River War Veterans Council. I oversee, or my group oversees, 10 Chapter Five nonprofit organizations. I am a member of five of those organizations. Not too long ago, three weeks ago, I met with the Veterans Service Officer, and the discussion we had was about the Memorial Day Parade. She informed me that she is now in charge of the parade, and she would like to make changes to the parade. I was quite surprised because in the past, the War Council has always managed a parade, coordinated a parade, set up the parades, bands for the parade, and so on. So it was very surprising that she wanted to be in charge. That's something we've always done with all the parades in the city. And we offered to assist her with the parade, but she said, you know, we'd like to do it my way. And in the past, we worked with the Veterans Office, and we coordinated with Ray Hague, you know, how we would actually manage those parades. And he let us do what we had to be done to manage those parades, set up the bands, locate exactly where the different groups would be, three divisions, and so on. So I was a little surprised that she wanted to totally be in control.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules so he can continue to go on and not be interrupted.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion to waive the rules made by Counsel Lee, seconded by Counsel Repoza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Go ahead, sir.
No, 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 no.
Bob? No, 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 no. That means you can continue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You don't have to worry about the three minutes.
You can go past the three minutes now.
Sorry about that.
You can go tomorrow.
Okay. Lost my train of thought for a minute. Apologize. But anyway, in the past, like I was saying, the city actually had paid someone to actually manage the parade. But since the War Council started to organize the parade, we did that for the last three or four years. And so I like the idea of the group that we're actually going to put together, the advisory group. That way, the War Council can be involved. We can recognize through our veterans, this is what the parade's going to be like, and so on. We can also work with the Veterans Service Officer with that advisory committee. But that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Paul Pachico, 141 Marshawn Street, and the subject is Veterans Advisory Council.
Yes, good evening. My name is Paul Pachico. Excuse me. I reside in Fall River, 141 Marshawn Street. I am a U.S. Army Veteran Combat Veteran, and I am commander of the Fall River Disabled American Veterans, Chapter Nine, which has over 500 members. It says 470, but we actually have over 500 members. This year, our organization is celebrating its 100th anniversary. I am also senior vice commander of Fall River Veterans War Council that is comprised of the Fall River Veterans Organization, such as the VFW, American Legion, AmVets, Italian Americans, Portuguese Veterans, Lebanese American Veterans, and so on. It was originally formed in 1930. Disabled American Veterans Assist, the DAV assists veterans on a daily basis in making applications for medical compensation and services, and to apply for other veteran benefits through interaction with the veterans. And by my own experiences, it is apparent that our interaction with the city VSO are sometimes conflicting and confusing. I do believe that it would be a good idea for everyone involved, the VSO, the Veterans Organization, Veterans of Fall River, if the city establishes a Veterans Advisory Board, similar to the Park Board, Water Board, and Planning Board, et cetera. Veterans Advisory Board members can be of veterans, non-veterans, ghostparents, and citizens involved with veterans. This board would be a great asset to facilitating communication and reviewing changes to the veterans officers in implementing policies and procedures, to something new and other veterans are not familiar with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is John Borges, 40 Seachem Street. The subject is Veterans Advisory.
My name is John Borges. I live at 40 Seachem Street, Fall River, Mass. I'm part of the Disabled American Veterans. I've been with them since 1998. And I've been, I do set up the parade for Fall River War Council since probably 10 years now. I haven't marched with my group probably 10 years. Unfortunately, I lost a good friend that helped me out doing this. And to have veterans fight against each other, there's no need for that. We need to figure out a way to work together. I agree we should have a board of veterans to decide who's wrong, who's right. You know, if it's paid or not, I don't really care. My thing is, I get involved with veterans a lot. My wife, unfortunately, passed away. She always made sure I was in the parades to help veterans. Not for myself, it's for support of the past veterans that passed away. This is all about them. It's not about us. We're here to support everybody. And I support this advisory group even right now. I mean, I'm kind of sad to find out that they took away the position that I was taking care of it. I go camping every Memorial Week. I leave that weekend just to help the veterans, which I didn't have to. Even my wife always came with me. Even sick she was, she was here. We have the permits for the parades for this year. The reason why they took over, I have no idea. But if we're going to fight each other, I think we need advisory board. Let's figure out something to help us, all of us. There's no need for this. I mean, when we fight a war, we fight together. I don't care if you're Navy, Marines, Army, Air Force, we're all one of them. And the council, I've been with the DAV since 98, with the council since 98. And the council, War Council's been taking the parade at least since 98. How long before that? I don't know, because I wasn't here. I signed up with the DAV '98, and I've been involved with them for about 24 years. You know, I strong aspire to support to do an advisory board for the veterans, so this way we don't have to go through this. There's no reason for veterans have to struggle. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any written communication?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. The next item, item two is discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, Leo. I didn't see. Counselor in seat six.
I just wanted to make a statement here tonight that ever since we got the new veteran head, there's been nothing but problems about every veteran that is looking for something. And to me, there's too many complaints about her. And of course, she wants to do what she wants to do. Well, maybe she's the boss, but they tell me some of the payments are not going out, and she's cutting things off, and it's just not right. And I know that the mayor knows about it, but again, I don't know if he's scared to talk to her, or do something, or put her on the right path. The veterans are not happy with what's going on with her. They should sit down and talk to her, but she don't think she has to sit down and talk to the mayor or anybody else. She's going to do what she wants. That's a problem. We never had in 25, 30 years a problem with the vet agent. I don't care who it was. But far as I'm concerned, she's out of order with everything. So just lay that down. The mayor can talk to her. We need the advisory board. Yeah, okay, that's no problem. But is that going to help? I don't know. We need somebody that can run it, take care of things without the argument, without them having to chase their money, them from Fall River to go to Rehoboth to talk to Ray Hague, which you'll help out if you can. It's just not right. Her job's in Fall River, taking care of the vets in Fall River, and not to disturb everything. Come on. So that's how I feel. The mayor knows. My public knows. That's it. Let's see what they do or where she goes. She don't belong in Fall River. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. So I will tell you that Counsel Vice President and I have both spoken to the mayor and our city administrator about some of the complaints that have been made and got clarification on some of them. And I know that there is a meeting of all of the parties tomorrow. Is that correct?
So there's a meeting scheduled for tomorrow at 2:00 PM with the veterans' agent, myself, the mayor. I just spoke to Commander Guinan. And obviously, any veterans who would be stakeholders in both Memorial Day Weekend and also matters going forward are invited. I would invite anyone who wants to have a voice in how we're trying to resolve some of the ongoing issues to be there. Certainly, everyone's welcome. Every voice is welcome. And most importantly, the veterans' voices are welcome.
Thank you. Do you yield, Counselor?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President Dion.
Yes, just one question for the city administrator. Isn't the mayor, in fact, putting together a Veterans Advisory Committee as we speak?
So there was an announcement that was sent down to the council and will be distributed widely this week regarding the creation of a Veterans Advisory Committee, the proposal. And obviously, I would be very happy to have input both from veterans as well as this council regarding the makeup. But the proposal is a nine-member committee. Three of those members would be permanent members, and that would be myself as the city administrator. That way, if there are questions as to the propriety of something that a city official is doing, then I can be the arbiter of that, or whoever is in my position after me. The VSO would be the second person. The mayor's proposed a member of the city council, who preferably would be somebody acting as a veterans liaison. Those would be the three city-connected people. And then six members from the veterans community. We didn't go so far as to specifically say one person from DAV, one person from War Veterans, one person from Polish-American Veterans. We just simply said six veterans, as long as that veteran lives in Fall River, is in fact a veteran, and is actively connected to a veterans organization whose membership is comprised of more than 50% Fall River veterans. Because there are certainly veterans organizations that may have a headquarters outside the city, but that serve largely Fall River veterans. Obviously, this is a starting point. The mayor, as always, is open to input and feedback and suggestions. And if the council and the public and the veterans community believes that it would be more appropriate to earmark, if you will, certain positions of those six, then it could be less. It could be a seven-member committee as opposed to a nine. However, it best serves the interests of the veterans in our community. But if somebody feels that it would be better to have certain members of certain organizations to make sure that they're all represented, I think that is fine. That said, the most important thing, and this comes from my own past as an attorney and trying to draft contracts and statutes and whatever else that have longevity to them, we're always able to fill those roles. So if we're too prescribed in how we identify the roles, I think sometimes you can get challenges in getting people to fit those certain requirements. And so to say six veterans who are residents connected to an organization that fits that criteria and are in fact veterans probably gives you the broadest swath of people that might be interested in serving. And at the end of the day, I think that's probably the best qualification to somebody who wants and has a heart to serve.
So to the gentleman's point that everybody fights and serves together collectively, this committee would be all-inclusive in that respect?
Yes, and I would want it to be as diverse and inclusive as possible. That's really the only way we can represent all the different voices, because not every veteran's experience is the same. You know, we all know that when somebody stands up here and says, you know, Army and Navy and Marines and Air Force, those of us from different services kind of in our minds go, yeah, yeah, but not the Air Force. As an example, I apologize, Counselor Lee. We all have our own little biases from our experiences in the service, and I'm a veteran myself. This should transcend that and be an organization that has as much diversity and as many voices as possible.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Attorney Ekin, could I ask that you start that conversation about this advisory council at that meeting tomorrow to get the folks that are at the table their input?
That was my intention, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counsel Lee.
So about a year ago, myself, yourself, counselors, I believe, Repoza, Counsel Pereira, we were trying to, we were at Kennedy Park. We were talking about something like this. When I brought it up, I was talking more about a board that was sort of informing the public about state bills, even possibly federal bills, that are coming down the line that could be in benefit to veterans. This conversation is starting more about what we could do locally regarding local events, parades, things like that. I just need to know, is this advisory board that is coming down the line to the public, is that going to be strictly on local matters? Or are we going to talk about some things that can help veterans on a statewide level as well? Because I would like to see a board that addresses some of these bills and things like that that can benefit the veterans at Fall River as well. You know what I mean? We definitely would 100% need a board regarding what's going on with the War Council, VSO, things like that. We need to organize and have something set in stone as to where are we going with these ceremonies and parades, and how are we carrying the veterans locally? But we also need to know something on a higher level as to how we are disseminating this information to the veterans that are coming down the line from the state and possibly from federal lines as well. Because I think we get caught up here, but there's also a lot of bigger things that we can do here in Fall River to support our vets as well. And I think a board like this potentially could be that. But we need to know what it looks like and what its purpose is.
So I think this board could certainly be a vehicle for disseminating that kind of information from the federal and state level to veterans, as well as dealing with the local interests that we have in making sure that our ceremonies and our parades and all of the local and sort of immediate things we do to honor and recognize veterans
Right.
are done in the very best possible way. The reason why I believe it's probably really important to include members of the administration, including and especially the VSO, is that regardless of who that is, that person does have access to information from the state level, is going to be well-versed in Chapter 115, is going to be connected to kind of the ongoing conversations with other veterans' agents and legislative personnel regarding what's going on with veterans and how we're dealing with anything as simple as a cost-of-living allowance to significant changes in how benefits are awarded and treated.
Great.
So I would agree wholeheartedly, Counselor Lee, that this proposed committee has every opportunity to do the broader mission that you're talking about, as well as the local one.
Because we do need to have a streamline as to who is going and where this is going, because we don't want to have warring factions here between veterans, like we all, including the VSO. She's a vet. We're all vets. We need to be on the same page. And I think it's the VSO's, and I talked to the VSO, it's her responsibility to be the person that talks to the War Council, smooths this out. It has to be done, because it's not done right now. You know, it's obviously very contentious right now. And it's going to be her responsibility to step in and say to the War Council, like, what can I do? She has to be the one to give. What can I do to make this work? You know? And we've already talked about it as well. So it's her responsibility. And I do think that she wants to do a good job, but right now, she has to work with people. She has to give a little to get a little here. That's the way I look at it. So I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Pereira.
I'm going to tell you that I've been working on this for quite a while. As my colleague in seat number three said, isn't the mayor putting this in? Yeah, he is. I talked to the mayor about this months ago. Because nothing was sent down to put an advisory committee together, that's why I filed a resolution, because we could have possibly nipped this in the butt. The problem is, the veterans in Fall River, I used to working with VSO Hague, and they developed a relationship. And he did a lot with them. Now, we have a new VSO that comes in, and perhaps she feels that there's a better way to do things, or that we really can't be doing this this way, but there's no communication. I mean, I called when I was, for years, for maybe 15 years, around Christmas time, I've gone around with veterans to put wreaths on 31 of the monuments in Fall River. This year, Mr. Farias, our flag officer, put up the wreaths. The veterans were upset by that, because it's not just going and putting a wreath on a monument. They say a prayer, they do a salute. It's a process. It's something that they feel good about doing. The end of January, February, I'm seeing dead wreaths all around. I call Victor Farias and say, Victor, you put up the wreaths, you're going to take them down? I had rotator cuff surgery. Okay, I don't expect him to go out and do that. I spoke to the VSO and suggested, call the War Council, they'll do that for you. No, she decided she was going to call John Perry. Now, in the past, if our city was used to do anything for veterans, the Veterans Council has to pay for those hours, that service. So I found that a little odd. But again, maybe she's just trying to do different things. I think you have two different people who are VSOs, and we had other VSOs. They all had their own way of doing things. And the reason for this, what you spoke about, Counsel Lee, anything that's coming down from the state regarding veterans, that's something the VSO should know, and she should be disseminating that. So if there is an advisory board, she can let them know some of the things that are going on. I believe she wants to do a good job. I really do. And maybe people were expecting that she was just going to do the same thing that Ray did, she was going to show up, the vet's kitchen on Wednesdays, they feed veterans. This Wednesday, tomorrow is their Easter dinner. Go by there. You know, go by there for an hour. You'll get to see the veterans. Maybe that's kinds of things that she needs to do. Clearly, the War Council wants to work with her, without a doubt. But there's a fraction that has occurred, and hopefully, the meeting tomorrow, we'll be able to resolve that. I don't think it should be a complaining session, you said this, you did that, because that's not going to get that's not gonna get us anywhere. The purpose of tomorrow's meeting was to talk about, what are we doing for Memorial Day? You all know, Memorial Day, we have eight or nine things to go to on the Monday, right? We go to Snake Hill, we go to Rick Urban's, we go, 207 does the battleship, then we go to the Iwo Jima at night, I mean, plus the parade, plus we have the monument at Kennedy Park, we do a little ceremony there. There's a lot of things going on. If you're brand-new coming in and not sure what all these things are, the veterans helped to organize those things. Rick Urban's, the VSO would make sure that there was a microphone there, make sure there were chairs there, you know, things like that. Snake Hill, make sure the microphone's there. So there's ways to work together and get things done. And I'm very happy to have the meeting tomorrow. I just heard Attorney Atkins say, well, you know, whoever wants to go can go, it's gonna be at 2:00. I don't want it to be just a free-for-all at this point. I thought that we had decided it was gonna be just a small meeting to try to iron this out and then have a meeting with everybody else. If you choose to do that and open it up to anybody, then that's fine. All the veterans that are here can attend. Maybe the conference room will be too small, maybe you get permission from the President, you can come down and use this room. But I just think that there's a way to do things. And I think when people have done things for a long time, like Mr. Borges, who's won the parade, it's like, wow, I'm not doing it this year. He feels hurt by it. And maybe she's feeling, no, it's my job, on my job description, that I have to organize these things. If I don't do it, I'm gonna look like I'm not doing my job, you know? So there's a little bit of both. As far as the advisory board, I did put it in, I think nine people are a lot, but I think a Gold Star parent has a right to be on that board. That's one of them that I, I'm adamant that needs to be there. And this will probably go to the ordinance committee, because you've got to do an ordinance on this advisory board. But I love working with the veterans, they are a very difficult group, they are, they know what they want, and it's tough sometimes to work with them. But I will tell you, no harder workers have I ever found than the veterans of Fall River. I'll tell you that. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? So I think that, that this resolution, or the mayor's, the one the mayor had sent down, will end up in ordinance, but if you would start that conversation with the folks at the meeting tomorrow, and if you would update the council on how that meeting went, I, we would be appreciative.
Certainly, just with regard to the meeting, Counsel Perera, we had talked about a very limited meeting, but I wasn't expecting to speak about it tonight. And since it became sort of a public thing, I thought it was important just to make sure that there was nothing being done in secret, and that as many people who wanted to be there could be there. So it's...
That's okay.
I think reasonable minds can disagree, but I hear, hear your saying, I appreciate that. I certainly will. With regard to what the mayor did send down, it is an advisory committee that he created, not necessarily subject to ordinance, but if, if the council's inclined, we can certainly send down and formalize this and make it part of, make it part of the canon.
He emailed it to us, that is not on our agenda, but Counsel Perera's resolution is, so we can hash that out in full council.
Roger, thank you.
And if you do need a larger space, you are welcome to use the chamber.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Anything further from the council? Saying nothing. Item two is a discussion with the Executive Director of CDA regarding the Year Three Annual Action Plan, which was referred March 22, 2022. Mr. Dionne. And you all should have your, your three action plan book.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Dionne.
It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, requesting that the City Council adopt the resolution to allow the Community Development Agency to submit its Year Three Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by May 15, 2020. The development of this plan started in December, using the Citizens' Participation Plan. On December 3 and the 17th of 2021, the Citizens' Guide and Public Hearing on Needs and Proposals was advertised in the Herald News and O'Journal and other media avenues. On January 25, the public hearing was held to discuss the needs, proposals, and performance. And on February 25, the Year Three Annual Action Plan was published, and a public hearing was again held on March 9. The public comment period for the plan started on February 25 and ended on March 28. The Year Three Annual Plan addresses Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Grant, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, and strives to meet the three objectives of HUD, which is to provide decent, affordable housing, to create suitable living environments, and to create economic opportunities. FR CDA will receive approximately $2,982,352 in CDBG grant funding, $1,052,327 in home investment partnership funding, and $249,879 in emergency solutions grant funding, and the year, program year is going to begin July 1, 2022. In the plan that you have in front of you, CDA is still gonna continue to prioritize infrastructure improvements like street and sidewalks, park improvements, job creation and job retention activities, public service programs like CD Recreation, childcare programs, senior citizen drop-in centers, and still fund the Police Department for seven police officers in our LMI Neighborhood Policing Program. We will continue to offer our first-time homebuyer programs, our homeowner and investor rehab loans and grants, and through our Emergency Solutions Grant, will still provide funding for homeless services at First Step In, Our Sister's Place, which is domestic violence shelter, and Catholic Social Services, that runs our rapid rehousing and homeless prevention program. The Community Development Agency has worked diligently to prioritize the funding. The Year Three Annual Action Plan was submitted to each of you to review on March 17, 2022. I'm here this evening to answer any questions you have. The plan you have in front of you is not much different from the plan that you had last year. I think it mirrors the exact same plan. As you're well aware, the Community Development Agency is required to do a five-year consolidated plan. And what that does is decides the priorities of, of the program for five years, and the annual action plan does it for each year. So you will not see much of a deviation between those plans. We've had some constraints with COVID. You know, our senior centers closed down almost for about six or seven months, maybe even a year, if I, if I remember right. So, you know, we're, we're getting some of our programs back up and running, and, and the need is still there. So I'm really here tonight to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counsel Palatier.
Thank you. First of all, everything that you dump over, streets, sidewalks, parks, and everything else, I have no problem. But I do have a problem with people calling me up, and they gotta move. And, well, you know, I'm paying $600, and somebody took over the house, and it's gonna cost me $1,200, I can't afford it. What do I tell these guys? You know, I can try to help you find an apartment, but again, you gotta have the money. Allen and Sylvia, the same thing. They're up there, somebody, every day, you get calls. And, you know, I just, I got no answers for them, really. You know, what do I tell them? Move out? I mean, they, they got a problem, I got a problem, the city's got a problem. What do we do with these people?
It's very difficult, Counsel, I don't have answers either. What we do at Community Development is, we try to develop property, and what we do is put rent restrictions on those properties, we put an affordable housing restriction on the, on those properties. My office right now is in the process of bringing 25 more units online that would be affordable to people who are learning, are earning less than 50% of the area median income. The problem you have, Counselor, is, is the housing market has just gone crazy. I mean, and it's not just in Fall River. The issue you have is raising rents that are going through the roof, people who, outside investors who are coming in buying properties, you know, you've probably heard it all, they're increasing the rents, four, five, $600. We're dealing with it every day, more homeless, we're seeing more homeless. We took our point-in-time count in February, and we have 108 people that we have on the streets that are unsheltered. It's the most, the highest number I've seen in a long, long time. I don't know where this is gonna end, really don't, to be honest with you. My first-time homebuyer program has dried up. We, 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 I capped that 80% of the area median income. Two years ago, somebody earning that income could get into their first house. Not anymore, they can't. Houses that were, were on the market for, you know, $285, $250, now going $400. I mean, when was the day you thought you'd ever see a three-family house selling for $650,000 on Brayton Avenue? We're in a different market, and, and it's sad. We're gonna see more homeless, and these calls are gonna keep coming in. There, there's no silver bullet, we're, we're in for the long haul. So I, I can't give you an answer.
Well, you say, well, we're gonna put 25 units up, 25 units, that's dropping a bucket, dropping a bucket.
Correct, you're absolutely right. The, the other thing that we're, we're facing is, first of all, the cost of housing. So I have nonprofit agencies that go out and buy property, and then rehab that property. And what's happening is, is that we have a subsidy limit, maximum subsidy limit that we have, we cannot go over per unit. So I'll give you an example, in a two-bedroom unit, I can't spend more than $200,000 in that unit, which is crazy when you really think about it. But by the time you buy the house at 400 and put another 300 in it, I'm already way above my, my maximum subsidy limits. So it's a real problem.
You know, you, you go around the highways, and you look in the woods, a bunch of tents, there's more people on the corners, every corner, there's somebody collecting, somebody collecting, and it's, you know, it's a bad image of Fall River. It's tough on the people who need it. You know, we sent a couple of letters out to try to help somebody, but, you know, it's not even working. You know, and make a phone call, try to get them in, and it, it, it just don't happen. Now, the Section Eights, everybody's trying to get a Section Eight, I guess that's the way to go, if you can get on, but there's a waiting list, maybe a couple of years, I mean...
Five years, Counselor.
Five years?
Five years. There's, the last time I looked, I think there is 14,000 people on the waiting list, and that is not just Fall River, the waiting list is Massachusetts wide. What we've done, just so you know, Counsel, what we've done is, we've hired an outreach team, we've, and you might know him, there, there's a person working in Steppingstone, Nikki Fontaine, who's working for the city. They're going out to those encampments, they're trying to get people into services, supportive services, getting them into the shelter. We're working at it.
You, you think there's only 180 people that are on the streets?
108.
In the last point-in-time count that we had, Counselor, we had 108 individuals that were counted as unsheltered homeless on the street. Now, is it more? Could be more, but that's the best count that we had. And currently, right now, I have 55 families and 45 individuals that are in, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven homeless emergency shelters right now.
All right. I hope the people understand, I mean, there's not much I can do, and anybody in the book, I mean, you feel for them, you make a few phone calls, but just not working, it's not working. So I just don't know what the answer is. I thought maybe you had the answer, but...
If I had the answer, I wouldn't be sitting in front of you.
Yeah. So with that, I yield, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel.
Keep up the good work, except for this, the homeless, that's it.
Thank you.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President Dionne.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
I'm great, thank you. So I guess sort of as a, as a follow-up, so as a city, what can we do to protect any segment of our population? I mean, we have people that are, that are living on less than $20,000 a year, retirees, that's a huge problem. What is the dollar amount on low income today? I'm sure five years ago, moderate income is low income today, especially with inflation and, and the way things are going.
Well, I'll give you an example, I don't know if this is gonna answer your question. Our fair market rent for HUD for a two-bedroom is probably about $875 to $900, and that two-bedroom on the market rate right now, depending on where you are in the city, is probably $1,200 to $1,300. So I have investors that don't want to take part in community development programs because of the fact that they can get more rent in the open market than they can get with a HUD program. So, so, I mean, there's no silver bullet to this. I mean, we have a very low educational attainment rate in the city of Fall River. A lot of industry have moved out, we, it, it's a real-pronged approach. We have to do better in economic development and job creation, jobs that pay a living A lot of people, if you look at the five-year plan that I have, it's, it's based on how much you pay for, how much cost you pay towards housing in terms of your total income. They call it cost burden. And a high majority of our, of our population is cost burden, which means they're paying over 30% of their income for housing. And another big segment is people who are paying over 50%. So it's, there's not one, it's not a one-pronged approach. You're looking at, you know, increasing the educational limit, educational attainment for people, bringing in better jobs that pay more of a wage, you know, a, a living wage, providing supportive services. You know, a lot of our, a lot of our homeless people are just not homeless because they can't find a house or an apartment. They have underlying issues, they have, you know, substance abuse, opiate abuse. We just, the administration with my office just wrote a Samson Grant, which is a $2 million grant over four years, and we're putting clinicians and recovery workers with the Police Department to try and get them help. But like anything, there's not enough beds in the community and outside the community for opiate abuse. So it, you know, it's, it's just a difficult situation, and we're gonna keep seeing this.
Yeah. Once upon a time, it was 25% of your income should have been for housing, end of story. Now we're at 30 and over 50%.
Oh, a lot of people in the city, and it amazes me, and it really amazes me, when you get to people who are on SSDI and SSI, I've seen some people who have incomes of $800 a month. How do I even get them an apartment? How do I, how do I get them a rooming house, or, you know, it's difficult. I have a lot of people, Community Development is a funding agency, but there's not one person that we turn, turn away. If they come to the door or they call, we take them. And a big part of my job, and I'm pretty proud of it, I don't think you see a lot of executive directors hand-holding people's hands through, through the whole process. And, you know, a lot of times, I get attached to these people, and I start making phone calls and start trading favors sometimes, like, you know, hey, can you help me out with this, I got somebody, can I get that apartment? You know, I worked with a, with a veteran a couple of months ago who had been homeless, and we ended, ended up getting him into a permanent supportive housing program, which was great. You know, he'll, he'll get, he'll pay 30% of his income, and the rest of it will be paid by our, our homeless program that we have. So, you know, we have wins, but yeah, there's a lot less wins than there are losses and, you know, issues.
And you're correct, you do turn yourself inside out, and so does all your staff. I mean, I personally know, and you know, a gentleman that your office assisted, who if, if you hadn't come to his rescue, he wouldn't be, have his home today. So there's absolutely no doubt that, that you do what you say you do. So a family of four, low income today is what?
I didn't bring it...
I mean, it doesn't have to be right on...
Family of four, 50% of the area median income is probably somewhere around $40,000.
So somewhere around $40,000. And we have people working in City Hall that make less than that.
You're absolutely right.
That's a shame. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Perera.
I was basically gonna say the same thing that Leo did. Today, I got two calls, both from people, one girl paying $600, took care of her father till he died, living on Brayton Avenue, and now they bought the house and they're evicting everyone from that house because they're gonna go in and do rehab. So she, it's not that she can't, it wasn't even that they tried to... So she, it's not that she can't, it wasn't even that they tried to raise her rent. I've had other calls that I've gotten that people's rents went up and they really can't afford them. And I agree with you, there's nothing that we can do as a, a body to do that. I've heard people talk about rent control, but you can't really. I mean, if you bought a house for two hundred thousand and now, you know, you have your rents to cover your mortgage, your insurance, taxes, water, now somebody comes and buys it and pays five hundred thousand, their mortgage is gonna be slightly different than what yours was. So, I mean, I must be really old because the first house I bought was in seventy-seven and I paid twenty thousand dollars. It was a two family, my backyard went to the next backyard, four fifty-seven Whipple Street, that was my first address. And then I sold it, I doubled the money, I should have kept it, but I doubled the money and built a house. But that's, you know, that's what it was. But what you're right on is that the educational level for the job opportunities and then companies that are gonna come in here to locate into Fall River need to have the public that has those growth opportunities, those educational opportunities to do some of these jobs. So it's, it's hard.
I mean, last week, we had a housing fair, I don't know if anybody, if you knew about it.
Yes.
We had a housing fair from three to seven here at Government Center in the atrium. We had about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty people come in. We, we, we tried to put them together with, which we did, Catholic Social Services to provide rental arrears for anybody that owed past due rent, anybody that had problems with utilities. We had South Coast County's legal there so that they could work with people who were, you know, in, in the eviction process or needed some kind of legal information. And we also had the Housing Authority there to, to take applications, to let people know where they, you know, are on the list. You know, we'll keep doing that, you know, that's what we'll keep doing. I mean, we'll keep doing the reach out, we'll keep, we'll keep working with people. There are some wins though, I can tell you, I've, I've, I've had a couple over the last couple of weeks that I'm really happy about where people have turned their lives around. So, you know, I look at it, if we can come in every day and turn one or two around, it's what I'm there for.
I think Catholic Social Services too, their funds are drying up because if you owe so much back rent, they'll only pay a certain portion.
Yeah, one of the, one of the issues we had was we got a lot of money in from the federal government. The problem is, is one part of money is I have to make the connection with COVID. And it's very, very difficult when you have competing funds from all different areas in the, in, in the state. So the state came out with a RAF pro, it has the RAF program. We couldn't use our funding during the eviction moratorium. So I sat on a million dollars, not just me, New York, New Bedford did, all the community developments, sat on money and we couldn't get it out. So a lot of these people went to the state and went through the RAF program. Finally, we were able to loosen up our funding when, when the eviction moratorium was completed. But now I'm seeing less people coming in that have been affected by COVID.
And, and I think too, when you look at the senior high rises that we have through the Housing Authority, I find that a lot of seniors are leaving those facilities and going into the mills that have been converted, the Wampanoag Mill, the knitting mill, et cetera. And part of the reason, and I think the federal government, I think Housing Authority dropped the ball. But my understanding was that if someone is drug addicted or alcohol addicted, that's an illness and they qualify. So age doesn't make a difference, they qualify to get into housing. So a lot of people went into housing and their addictions have come back or, you know, they're not a hundred percent. And some of the elderly are fearful of that. And there was a way to do something where it would be in one building or something like that and the Housing Authority didn't do that. But I, but I agree. I mean, we don't wanna see our elderly in fear. When I have an elderly woman tell me, look, I don't go downstairs and get my mail till my neighbor comes home. So I have company in the elevator. Nobody should be living like that. So I think the Housing Authority needs to do a lot of work on the air end as well.
I mean, I, I remember a couple of years ago where your vacancy rate was twelve percent. Our vacancy rate now is probably somewhere around two percent.
It is two percent. I just called, it was ninety-eight percent capacity.
I used to have, at one time, probably three hundred vacant and abandoned buildings in the city. But through the Building Blocks Program that Councilor Kadine put in when he was city administrator and the way the market is, we're down to about seventy-five now. And those are properties that have issues with them, like they're in tax title. You know, we have properties that we have on our radar, that we're talking to people on a, on a weekly basis. And you're starting to see building permits being pulled out. So there is gonna be some new units coming online, but nowhere near where you need to, for, for the, for the demand.
No, I, I understand. And one of the houses that you and I had talked about, a two family, I found out the owner passed away, but her brother was flying in. So I, I told him I'd connect him with Matt Thomas and see what he could do. But yeah, I mean, I wanted to know, I, I understand about the streets. How much money you think you're gonna get in this year? How many streets are we gonna be able to do with your money? Any estimation?
I'm looking at more doing sidewalks instead of streets.
Okay.
Because of the amount of money. I'm probably looking somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars. My agency, the agency in the last three years has spent over one point two million dollars in streets and sidewalks. We've done about six to seven thousand square yards of sidewalks, which is quite a bit. I've never done so much ever in my twenty-six years of being with the city. Very, in the next week or so, we're starting on Barrett Street to redo Barrett. Last year, I did three other streets. I don't know the exact, I had it here. We did Globe, Pot of Globe, Albert and Wilder in the south end right near Councilor Pelletis.
We know that house, corner of Albert.
So, and you know, I got a little project this year going on at Ferry Street with some new sidewalks on Ferry. But we're, we're committed to, you know, we spent a lot of money in our parks. I've never done so many park projects over the last four or five years. And it's a great program because what we're doing is we're using CDA's money as a match to be able to get the park grant from the state. So it's really working out very well. Some of these park projects have ballooned to, to a lot of money. If you take a ride by Kathy Assad Tot Lot, that's gonna be finished up in the next maybe month. We're working on going out for bid on the tennis courts down on Kennedy very soon. I would say within the next week or two. And I've been involved with some oppa funding also, looking at skateboard parks and some, doing some work on Kennedy Park.
Well, I think skateboard park was a good idea and several people who have that as a sport went, you know, to all the parks too, to give you and the mayor.
It was a return home.
Yeah, to give you and the mayor ideas of what exactly they were looking for. Mr. Dion, I, I would have to, and I can't yield before I tell you that I'm very happy with the work that you do and your commitment to the city of Fall River as well as your staff. So I thank you very much. With that, I yield.
I appreciate it.
Councilor in seat five, Councilor Lee.
Thank you. So just, just to add to this, I've, I worked, I used to work at the, at the shelter not too long ago and I had a front row seat to see Mr. Dion working with people. And I don't, I've never seen the harder work of a person in, in your position to do what you have to do. And the way you have to do it, it's, it's very difficult. It's a very difficult job. And, and I give you all the credit in the world for that, for real. You do, you do really good work. So two questions, well, one of the things you brought up. You said something about the challenges, the economic challenges that we have, that we have educational challenges and we have, you know, employment challenges, things like that. Could you describe, if, if it's even available, could you describe what your agency is trying to do to assist in that specific area? Are there job training opportunities for people? Is there funding going towards those areas at all?
DC.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we fund the Office of Economic Development, as you're well aware of. They have done some great work in the past. You'll also know for a couple of years there, there was a strife between the administration and that organization.
I vaguely recall that.
And some of it fell on community development. There was a couple of years there where it didn't seem like we had an economic development program. But I can tell you that it's backed strong, running well with Ken. You know, you could say what you want about Ken, but he knows what he's doing. He's a very knowledgeable guy when it comes to economic development. So we got that program going. We put like three hundred thousand dollars into that. He's had some good successes. I know he's done some work with US Bedding. They've created about, I wanna say twenty jobs so far. He's got some other good, big projects on the horizon. We also are working with, we got a child development program that we fund out of People Incorporated that has a hundred and fifty children going there. We provide, we did a veterans program through the Pine Street location for, with CARES Act funding to do job training and it was somewhat successful. We, I believe we, we helped about a little less than ten people and they ended up getting jobs. We also provide a ray of, you know, educational programs for children. We were very instrumental in doing learning pods during COVID. We, we contracted with five different agencies. We touched probably about over two hundred and something kids where they were able to go to these learning pods because they were at home and they didn't have proper supervision at home and they were on a hybrid method, I guess. So they were able to come in. So, I mean, we do a lot of different things, infrastructure, public services, you know. We, we try to get the kids when they're young and, and develop and work with them. We don't fund anything in the school system. We funded many years Community Engagement Center at the YMCA. We're still funding them. They have about two hundred children that take part in that program. We've, we've funded CFC for some of their programs.
Right, yeah.
Totally different array of programs.
But, um.
We touch a lot of stuff in the city.
Well, regarding, regarding some of the things you talked about, do we know for sure that the employment that has been, you know, people that are getting employed, are they Fall River residents for the most part? Are they, cause some of the, some of the, some of the things that's come down the line, sometimes it doesn't always go to a Fall River resident. So I didn't know if there was.
I couldn't answer that for you.
Okay.
I can tell you that everybody that takes part in getting a job through job creation or job retention has to be, fifty-one percent of those people have to be below the area median income. So the people that are getting these jobs.
Economically are in need.
Are people that are struggling, who have lower incomes, who are hopefully getting a higher income by getting one of these jobs.
So I really do, obviously, I believe, I think most of us do that.
But I don't wanna tell you they all come from Fall River because my understanding is a lot of people that were employed at Amazon were, were from outside of the city, so.
That was one of the examples, I don't wanna, you know, throw it out there.
Ken could answer that a heck, a heck of a lot better than I can. I wouldn't be able to answer that.
So you have also this, this part here called Neighborhood Policing Program?
Yeah.
Now, could you just provide some details on that for the public? And also, is that, I think that's different. Is it different from what was in the works at one point in time where there was gonna be funding for like a pilot body camera program?
Yes, that's, that was separate. The body, the body camera, camera pilot program was going to be for those seven police officers for the, that work for the Community Development Agency. My understanding is that they have a state grant for that now.
Okay.
And they're, I guess, negotiating it through contracts.
Yeah, that's down the line.
The LMI Neighborhood Policing Program is seven police officers that work in four different sectors in the city. They, they work all in low income areas. You'll see some of, sometimes they're in a car, sometimes there's walking beats, sometimes you'll see them on bikes. My office went out and bought four or five brand new bikes for the police department, outfitted all seven officers so that they could cover more ground on a bicycle than they can do on a walking beat. So you might see them on Pleasant Street, Bedford Street, down at the waterfront. If you see in your packet, in your, in your plan, in the back, you'll see a map that actually shows you the quadrants of the LMI program.
Yeah.
There's four areas, you'll see them all shaded. It's basically the, the lower income areas in the city.
And I'm assuming that that's where most of it.
We've been doing this for years.
Yep.
We've tightened it up, we've made it better. At one point in time, they were walking in parks, which kinda wasn't the best way of using them. And we put about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars into that program a year.
Okay. Thank you, I yield.
Councilor, Council President Ro.
Thank you. So I wanted to answer some questions from my colleagues, first of all. If anyone calls you, tenants have an awful lot of rights. No one, people think that they, they have to go or, or they're gonna be, you know, put out on the sidewalk. On the Massachusetts website, there is a tenant guidebook. There's also a landlord guidebook with all of their rights and roles and responsibilities in, in each of them. And I would also advise them if, if they have to move, lots of times it's cost prohibitive for people to move. They just don't have that extra money hanging around to hire movers or get a truck or boxes or any of that. Ask them to ask their landlord, their new landlord, if that's who it is, for cash for keys. And oftentimes the landlord, if they do have somewhere to go, will do that as opposed to having them, you know, stay six, eight months to, to move somebody faster. If they wanna redo a, a unit, they'll often do what's called cash for keys and give them the funds, moving expenses, sometimes first and last month's rent for them to move. But in this, in this market and with COVID and with evictions, anybody that goes to a judge and says, I have nowhere to go, you know, I can't find a place. They are going to get as much time as they need, so I never wanna see anybody, you know, I'm, I'm sure it's upsetting that people might have to move if, if somebody buys their building. But they have rights and they, they can't just be told you have thirty days and you have to go.
Council President, you're exactly right. The best thing to tell somebody is to stay where you're at. Because they have a ton of rights. The, the eviction process is really drawn out a lot longer than what it used to be because of COVID. So we tell people, stay where you're at.
And certainly, nobody wants an eviction on their record, but tell them to keep paying, they'll get their notice. But if, you know, the, the people buying these homes, they also know there is no housing. That's why they're buying the houses and raising the rents, cause they know that they can rehab it, hopefully, and they can get the rent. But they also know that they, they need to allow them to find a, a place to live, a suitable place to live, not just, so, nobody can be kicked out. So I did wanna mention that. And I, I also wanted to say about Mr. Dion going above and beyond. I know I've called you multiple times, I still call you. And you have helped folks that have been, you know, had fires. You've helped people that are living, were living in houses that are uninhabitable, you know, far behind, beyond what your normal scope of, of work would be. And because you do meet people and, and you, you care about them, you don't wanna see them lose their house or, or not have a place to live. So I wanted to echo my colleague's sentiments there. I did wanna ask you, specific to housing, the home buyers program, I know you, you touched on it and you had said, you, is that, is this the eighty thousand, the home funding?
Yes, we, we, we reduced our goals. We usually give ten thousand dollars, up to ten thousand dollars per first time home buyer. So we figured about probably eight next year. So far, this year I've only done two.
So and, and the problem in this market, and I've sent somebody to you and to Councilor Dion's point, who's a city worker. I, as a realtor, because I'm a counselor, I cannot make a commission if I send somebody to your program. But it's in their best interest to possibly be able to get the funds from your program from their down payment. This person is a hard worker, has worked for the city a long time. The building that he's been in, him and his family forever, has sold twice in the last two years. And he just, you know, he wanted to purchase a house so he doesn't ever have to worry about this again. But in this market, at the salary unfortunately that he is paid, his approval is not enough to buy a house at this market. Yet, his salary is too much to.
Correct.
Be able to get the funds from your program. So he's in this weird area of, of no man's land. And I know I had asked you, do you think that your guidelines are going to change? So, you know, it's great that you offer this and I'm happy to send people there if it works for them. But if they can, if they do qualify for your program, chances are they're not, there's probably not going to be a house in their price range.
Correct. And the, the other issue you have is. Correct. And the, the other issue you have is I've had a police officer and a wife being a school teacher or a girlfriend being a school teacher. Our, our, our programs go by household income. And when you add those two incomes together, they're way over the income limit. So I have a lot of people say to me, "Why don't you do a, a housing program for teachers? Why don't you do a housing program for public safety?" They make too much money-
Right.
-uh, to, to, to go for my program. The other thing I thought of, and we talked about it quite, for quite some time, and I don't know if it's beneficial, um, when you get a $10,000 grant, okay, that falls into having your property, having a five-year affordability restriction put on it. Now, if I go above the 10,000, that's going to trigger a 10-year affordability restriction on it. So I thought about raising the, the first time home buyer program limit to $20,000. But then that requires somebody to keep that property, their primary residence, for 10 years.
Correct.
That's a long time. The other issue when I was thinking about this was-
It's too much. It can only be a certain percentage.
There's also what you call a recapture agreement. So I've had people come in and buy a house and get a $10,000 loan from us and bought the house at 260,000 and then two years later sold it for 400,000. And they think they're just going to pay back the 10,000. Well, the HUD regulations require me to recapture their profit also. So I've had people take out a $10,000 first time home buyer grant that ended up costing them 40 to 50,000 at the time when they sold their house at a $200,000 improvement. So you're trying to do what's best for the borrower and you don't want to send them down the wrong pipe, you know? So i- i- it's kinda, it's a balancing act a little bit. And, you know, we're, 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 I'm trying to look at other programs. I'm trying to look at, um, uh, programs that are, uh, sponsored by banks. You know, we, we, we have five different lending institutions that we're working with, trying to come up with a program that would be for higher income individuals, that would have a preferential maybe interest rate, um, some free, uh, private mortgage insurance, a couple of months free of private mortgage insurance. We're looking at other things for that higher income level. But, um, I'm telling you right now, the low income population is way priced out of this housing market right now.
So the question I had asked you when I had called you about that, um, specific family was, are there going to be any changes to your guidelines?
Not right now, I don't think.
So-
I had somebody last week that couldn't get it because they were $300 over the income limit and it killed me. And I get those sometimes.
So, all right, that was my one question. And I, and I have one more. You have a increased supply of affordable housing, item three. Um, and it says rental units rehabilitated, five. Is that units or is that buildings?
That's units.
Now, you have several properties under construction right now, correct?
Right now I do. I have, um, I just finished with the 11 units on the Durfee Tech Building. Um, we have three units at Donley Street, three units at Murray Street. I got three units on Whipple Street. And I have eight units that I'm closing, hopefully very soon, on Tobin Street. And I have four units on June Street. So I have about eight or nine housing projects in different forms of rehab and closing that are going on right now.
So am I looking at last year's, um, how many you did? Is there, am I not looking at what your goal is for this year?
My goal for, my goal for, for five years is somewhere around 25 to 35 units.
Okay.
Okay? But it, but it's really based on how much it's going to cost you to rehab those units.
Right.
Um, it's how many units you're going to get done. You know, I only get, well, the CDA only gets $1.2 million a year in home funds. So if you're looking at rehab, and our rehab right now is about 150,000 a unit, which seems crazy. Who would put 450,000 of rehab money into a three-family home? That's what it's costing. It's costing about 150,000 a unit. So you've got to really look at it and say, "Okay, take, um, take, uh, 1.2 million, divide by 150,000, that's a little less than 10 units." And I have to spend some money on what you call a CHODO, Community Housing Development Organization, which means I have to purchase some property. So add another 150,000 onto the development cost of that project. So there's some three-family houses with you purchasing rehab. Can be $800,000, 700, 750. And people tell me, "You've got to be crazy to put that amount of money in a three-family home." And that's what it's costing.
Because it, well, one, the, the cost of, of materials and two, it's three mini houses, really. You need three kitchens, three bathrooms, three heating systems, three, three everything.
My understanding is a piece of PVC pipe, eight feet PVC pipe, that was selling for like six bucks three, you know, two years ago, is now something like $20 to $22,
Yeah.
um, uh, uh, for that eight-foot section of pipe. So the, the cost have increased substantially. So when you see five units, I'm basing that on 1, 1.2 million divided by about 200 grand, five units.
Yeah. So 25 is your, 25 units is your goal for-
I want to say 25 to 30 units was the five-year goal and that was taking 1.2 million, multiplying it by five, you know? We also have, you know, CDA has, uh, uh, almost a $20 million loan portfolio. We're bigger than some credit unions, smaller credit unions in the city, where I'm getting repayments on those loans. A lot of those loans have been repaid. There, people were starting to sell their houses because of the price. So our income that was coming in at $40,000 a month is now $20,000 a month. So we got less income coming in, which means less development.
So, and my one last question, if somebody wanted to rent one of those units, how do they go about doing that?
It's, it's done by lottery. So what will happen is, is once the, once the, um, once the properties are done, uh, the owner of the property, which is the, the nonprofit agency's, one of them being the Preservation Society of Fall River owns the one on June Street. The other one's a Community Housing Resource Board. Um, we would, uh, put advertisements out, uh, letting people know through the paper, Herald News, online, through the city's website, saying, "Hey, you know, we got these three units. We'll pick a lottery date, ask people to, to apply, make sure that they don't have an eviction, make sure that they don't have serious problems from previous rentals, um, and, uh, do a lottery, pick them out of a hat."
Okay. All right, thank you.
So if you know anybody, please let me know.
I do. All right. Thank you. I yield.
Any other counselor?
Could send them to your house, Leo. I really want to thank you. Um, it's, it's, uh, I've, I've worked here for a while and you're a good counsel. And, uh, if there's any, if there's any, um, uh, programs that you know of that I don't know of, I'd love to, you know, hear from you guys, anything that we can do better.
Thank you, Mr. Dion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item three is transfers and appropriations. If the administration would like to come down. It's the mayor in order appropriating $1,427,230 from insurance to the school appropriation. And you should have all had an email today. I did request that the administration provide the backup documentation because they did not send it down when this was put on the agenda. So that was in your email today by new attorney akin.
Good evening. Um, actually, is this, just picking up? Okay, there we go. Um, so the 1.4 million dollar appropriation, uh, that we are seeking, uh, the council's approval on is essentially a portion of what it would be, of what would be required for, uh, the city to get to 100% of its net school spending obligation. Um, I'm clearing the room here.
Uh, excuse me, counsel, could you, before you, can we have a brief recess?
Yes.
Two-minute recess. Counselors now back in session. Attorney Aiken, item three, transfers and appropriations.
So this appropriation of 1.4 million dollars represents a portion of the 2.3 million uh, that would represent what's required to get us to our full net school spending requirement for FY '22. Um, there was, uh, so that's divided up into two amounts. The 1.4 million that we're asking for the appropriation on tonight. Uh, and then in the future, there'll be an additional 871,000 that'll make up the total amount. The 1.4 million is attributed to the difference in health insurance that was originally reported, estimated, uh, in 2021. Um, and, uh, as a result, uh, there's a 1.4 million dollar shortfall that's coming out of insurance, uh, to be appropriated to the schools, uh, in order to get us to 100% of net school spending. It won't get us there. The 827 is required to get us there and there'll be another appropriation for that. Um, just in case anyone's wondering, uh, the insurance account that we have um, has a balance of between six and seven million dollars, uh, in it. And, um, so that's the account that we work from that gets premiums. There was an appropriation, obviously, at the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, and so while this was not entirely anticipated, it is, uh, it's something that we can sustain uh, and pay, uh, without creating a deficit.
Thank you. Counselor seat seven, Counsel Pera.
You know, for it to come from the insurance account, that's something that after, uh, the Insurance Advisory Board here has a big issue with, that, you know, they have, they're supposed to have 75%, we have 25%. And every time the city needs money, they take it, they take it and then they've had problems in the past. So I will tell you, you're going to get some pushback on this because you shouldn't be taking from the insurance. Uh, you know, I know, I mean, I go to my retirement board meetings and stuff and, uh, Chip Kamara talks about this a lot, the president of the union, and for some reason they always grab from there. I mean, it got to the point that one time we wanted to switch, uh, on insurance, uh, to get another plan. We borrowed the money from the, from the insurers because we didn't have money there. Do you remember that, attorney? Uh, that happened, yeah. So I don't know. I have some mixed emotions about it. I get it that we need to pay net school spending and we put 25% in there. But at the same time, you know, I think when things like this are done, maybe speaking to that advisory committee, explaining a situation to them, seeing how much is left there, six to seven million, you said, which is good. But there should be like triple that. But over the years, they do that.
So just to be clear, th- this is an insurance-related contribution to the schools? So this has to do with, uh, an estimate of the health insurance in FY '21 for the schools? And that's why it's coming out of insurance? Cause if, if it weren't, we would, it would come out of someplace else?
So it's coming out of the insurance payments that are made, that we put towards teacher salaries?
No. So this isn't about going to teacher salaries. This is, this is a shortfall in insurance on the school side. Uh, it brings us up to our net school spending, close to 100%, not quite there. Uh, but the issue is that, uh, it's attributed to, as you can see in the, the supporting documentation, there was a difference in health insurance originally reported in 2021 for the schools and that's why we're taking it out of the insurance, uh, account.
Insurance for schools.
Just for point of clarification, so it's not coming out of the trust fund. It's coming out of the general fund insurance line-
For the insurance line item, okay.
-that would typically go into the trust fund for payment.
Right, right.
But part of that is, is for the schools. So since the schools are short, there's going to be a savings. We don't need to transfer the entire amount. So they're taking that portion, giving it back to the schools so that they can spend it.
Okay. So that, where was that insurance money going to go?
So if it was, if it was used, that would have went into the trust fund to pay for-
Right.
-the healthcare. But because, because they don't have either none, less teachers or people are not taking family plans or single plans, there's obviously less than they anticipated for payment.
And our insurance plan has changed to Etna.
Correct.
So it's gone down a little bit.
Plus the, the estimates are frequently higher than-
Right.
-is often used. So that's really what happened in this case, is there was a significantly higher estimate than what ended up being needed.
All right. Thank you. But that I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor, Vice President Dion.
Um, no, I was gonna go along the same line that Counselor in seat seven did. I yield.
Counselor in seat five, Counsel Lee.
Yeah, mistaken. It just, uh, it just sounds like a circumstance occurred which allowed for this to happen. But, um, I guess my question is, you know, funding net school spending sustainably for future budgets. Is there, is there a plan for that?
Um, that's a huge question. And I think, I mean, you know it's a huge question. Uh, obviously, uh, we know that as time goes on, uh, Fall River's contribution, or the city's contribution to net school spending is going to get higher and higher and higher. Um, at this point, I'm not really prepared to talk about what the plan is for funding net school spending because it's something that we're constantly, uh, talking about and working on, uh, not just from a strategy standpoint, but also, uh, talking to, uh, the legislative delegation and, uh, the governor's office and lieutenant governor's office about how we, uh, look at continuing to fund the schools, um, as well as they should be, uh, which is as well as anything else that we do. Uh, because that's really where our investment should be, but not at the expense of, of the city, which, uh, as we know, cannot always really afford, um, the, the level of, of net school spending contribution.
This is only my second term, but I know there's councils here that have been here for a long time and it just, correct me where I'm wrong, it just seems like every time this topic specifically comes up, it's, it's like, "We have to move this piece and move that piece to make it happen." But there's no real sustainable plan to fund it and we end up short sometimes, you know?
So this is not that. Uh, so certainly that, that can happen. But this is, this is just a, a, a matter of, of an estimate in '21 being higher than what it turned out to be. Um, and essentially the 1.4, so we, um, we do our net school spending contribution. And, uh, we then, uh, get communication from, uh, and it's actually the third page of the supporting documentation. Uh, so you see a letter from Jay Sullivan, uh, from the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education indicating, um, you are within, uh, the parameters for net school spending, so it's a percentage. Uh, you're within that percentage. In order to get to 100%, which the mayor is committed to being in, um, you still have this much to make up. Uh, and then it was determined that the 2.3 million is the balance, 871,000, uh, with regard to, I believe, charter, um, and, uh, s- uh, school choice assessments, uh, and then the 1.4 million with regard to health insurance. So, uh, this was not sort of a scramble because something unexpected happened, which, first one to acknowledge, that, that happens, uh, from time to time. But in this situation, um, it was, uh, it's a significant number with a lot of moving parts. Uh, and the, uh, Department of Secondary and Elementary Education notified us, "All right, there's more to do. Uh, if you wanted to do nothing else, you're within the parameters, but the mayor wants to be at 100% and this is what it takes to get there."
Okay. Thank you for the information. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Pera.
I'm just curious about the 871,151 and the change in that. Is there, is it an enrollment situation that, why that number changed? Why exactly is that?
I don't know. Uh, I don't know how the assessment changed. Um, this is something where, uh, I was, uh, talking with, uh, Mr. Iacopone and the mayor uh, about this this morning with regard to the 1.4 million. Um, I just didn't have a chance to, to do any research into the 871. That's going to be coming before you and that we full documentation, uh, sometime in the next several months, uh, that we full documentation supporting why, uh, that change happened um, and whether or not it's something we could have, uh, foreseen.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President Dion.
So this money basically is coming forward from the '21 budget being put into the '22 budget to cover net school spending in '22?
It's not necessarily coming forward from the '21 budget. There was a, um, an estimate made in '21, for '22.
Okay.
It turned out, once the numbers were, were, the actual numbers rather than the estimated numbers in '22, we were, uh, there was a 2.3 million dollar shortfall.
Now, was that the result of elective surgeries, et cetera, being put off because of COVID?
Possible, but more likely, um, so there was always the, uh, the belief that, um, health insurance rates, you know, were going to skyrocket, uh, and in fact, they just didn't. Um, even on the city's side, we looked at a two and a half percent increase versus the 10% that I think, uh, Ms. Sahadi put in a year ago. Uh, she was estimating a, a really significant increase. It ended up being less than that, thankfully. Um, so I think there was just some estimates back in '21 that were higher than what they turned out to be. Um, and that's, that's where the, uh, the 1.4 million dollars comes in.
So if not for the shortfall in net school spending, this money would have gone into the account?
That's right. Well, into the trust fund.
The trust fund, yes. All right. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Pera.
Yeah, I would just like to add that sometimes when they do a budget, they overestimate. Yeah, I would just like to add that sometimes when they do a budget, they overestimate. That's happened a lot throughout our budget, as you're well aware. So I think this was clearly an overestimation of what insurance was going to be. That's a good way to like put money that you can transfer after, like have a whole bunch of positions and vacant, 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 so they get all that money, but you're never going to hire those people. It's kind of like that. After a while, you just get so used to it. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Seeing nothing, this was just on for discussion, it's in full council. Thank you, Mr. Arkin.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn finance made by Council Reposo, seconded by Council Kadim. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Committee on Finance is adjourned. We'll go right into full council.
Council President, an obvious moment of silence for Kelly Souley Young.
The regular meeting of the Fall River City Council now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Councilors Kadim?
Here.
Camara? Dion?
Here.
Kilby? Lee?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Perera?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
And President Lullaby LaBelle?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. If everybody would please rise for a moment of silent prayer, and if we would keep Kelly Souley Young and her family and friends in our purse. Remain standing for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
How fitting, Madam President, today is Kelly Souley Young's birthday. So happy heavenly birthday to her. First item on the agenda is a communication from the mayor and a resolution from the Community Development Agency and their three-year annual action plan.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Council Vice President Dion, seconded by Council Kadim. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, do we need a roll call?
It's not necessary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's have it.
Have the mayor's communication and the order that the sum of $1,427,230 be and the same is hereby appropriated from the insurance to the school appropriation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved made by Council Kadim, seconded by Council Perera. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item number three is the mayor's communication and a proposed ordinance regarding the salary schedule for contract personnel.
Refer to ordinance.
Second.
Motion to refer to ordinance made by Council Kadim, seconded by Council Pelletier. Any discussion? Councilor in seat three, Council Vice President Dion?
Yeah, and I'm sure I'll bring this up at the ordinance committee meeting. We have a couple of positions. We have a treasurer slash collector now, and in the salaries, it's still listing treasurer separately and collector separately, and also has a line item for treasurer-collector, so that treasurer and collector, the separate single items, would be taken out of ordinance so that we don't, in essence, have three positions instead of the one position now. And then also assistant purchasing agent. We don't have an assistant purchasing agent anymore. It was determined last year or the year before that it isn't necessary anymore, so I would also motion to have that removed from the salary line item, from the, from that list as well, so.
You're going to be doing that in ordinance committee counseling?
Yes. With that, I yield.
Anything further from the council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number four is the mayor's communication and a proposed ordinance regarding the salary schedule for executive officers, department heads, and non-union positions.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Second.
Motion to refer to ordinance made by Council Perera, seconded by Council Pelletier. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the ordinances.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance made by Council Kadim, seconded by Council Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on March 22nd, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw with Councilor Michelle Dion absent and not voting. These were, this was the resolution that related to improvements and repairs at city parks and baseball fields.
Some moved.
Motion leave to withdraw made by Council Perera.
Second.
Seconded by Council Vice President Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Whereas as weather improves, there seems to be an increase in unregistered motorbikes traveling on city streets, and whereas many operators of these vehicles are unlicensed, and whereas this situation is causing a severe public safety problem, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the chief of police to discuss this matter.
Where's my hammer on this?
So I co-sponsored this with Council Perera, and I had asked, and she asked that we amend this on the floor. I would be making a motion to send this to the Committee on Ordinance. Chief of Police is working on an ordinance for this. It is already in public safety, as it was sent there, I believe, last October by Council Peckham. But when the chief's ordinance is ready, and I know that the administration has been working on it with him as well, that is where it will need to be, and it can simply go there rather than having to come to the council and then go to ordinance. So I, my motion would be to send this to, or if someone could make a motion to send this to the Committee on Ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
And I'm going to let, Councilor in seat seven?
I don't have a problem going to the ordinance committee. The problem that I have is resolutions get filed. I filed one on this last year. Now, we still haven't done it. We still don't have ordinances, and spring is upon us, and you see these, so if it goes to the ordinance committee, and the chief is going to come up with ordinances, I think it should be something that is expedited.
Correct.
Because we waited all year and nothing happened. I mean, there's a lot of things. Springfield just put together a task force. There's drones that they use. There's cameras that they use. There's a chip line that can be used. There's a lot of solutions, and I would hate to see this just, you know, we're going to do it, what, by August?
So-
And May, we have two meetings, and June, then July and August, we have one. So really, there's four meetings to put this together?
So it would be that where they're already working on it, Councilor, and I agree with you, and they have looked at what other communities have done and put bits and pieces into the ordinance?
No, I did talk to the chief, and he was looking at stuff now, but nothing was finalized. It was, well, we're thinking about this, we're thinking about that. Well, you need to act a little bit quicker than just thinking about it. You need to sit down, come up with a plan, if that's meeting with the Corporation Council here to see what's around or what other ordinances. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. Look and see what other ordinances are done.
I believe-
I think a task force was a good idea by Springfield, but I just don't want to see it delayed.
Correct. So if we send it to ordinance, when their ordinance is ready, it does not have to go to the council, it can go straight to ordinance.
Yeah, I will amend it that it goes to ordinance, no problem.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilor in seat one, Council Kadim?
So I was just going to say that I had the opportunity, the mayor reached out to me, I want to say about two weeks ago, to set up a meeting with the chief and himself, given that I was the chair of ordinance, to just discuss this ordinance. So we met, I believe it was last week, with the administration and the chief, and Chief Garvin has several different ordinances, one from Boston, one from Taunton, one from the City of Providence. We went through all the ordinances. So at this point, it really is a cut and paste, it's going to be coming down, so I think it can be expedited. What I will say is, is I think when people file resolutions, they need to file resolutions and put them in the appropriate committee. I mean, because we've got stuff that's in public safety, that's not going to get an ordinance done. And I'm not suggesting this one, but the one that's currently sitting there, you know, that I think the right approach, if we're looking to get, you know, some type of law put in place, that we should be looking into making sure that it's going to ordinance so that, you know, those, those things are getting cleaned up and, and, you know, I'm trying to do the best I can with ordinance, cleaning up some of the outstanding items, because there's a number of items that have been sitting there for a year, you know, two years, to make sure that we're addressing those and getting those out. So this ordinance that's coming down should be rather, rather quick, because I think it's a very detailed ordinance. Obviously, Taunton and Boston had good, good information, so it really is just pulling it. And I think once the ordinance committee looks at it, it truly is probably just one meeting to get that adopted, so.
No, I, I think that's good. I don't have a problem. But I want it to go to public safety too, so that people hear what's being done, what solutions are coming, and maybe people have-
It's already in public safety, Councilor.
...ideas as well, so, but it never came out of public safety.
No, it didn't.
That's the problem. Leo?
Don't, sorry. Do you?
I yield.
Councilor?
I yield, yeah.
Councilor in seat six, Council Pelletier?
Thank you. There's only one way to teach these kids. It's Providence, got the right idea. You take the bikes, put them all together, get the payloader, and crush them. It's the only way you're going to get them not to do this. When they lose their bikes, their toys, cost them money, and the other people see that, they're going to stop. There's been a little more, I didn't see too much last year. I see some this year, but we, we got to do it, you know? Stare, and that's it, get a payloader, run them over, see you later. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Anything further?
No.
So there's a motion to amend, to send to the Committee on Ordinance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Lee on the amendment. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then it would be appropriate to a motion to adopt-
Refer to ordinance.
Motion to adopt as amendment, amended, made by Council Perera.
Second.
Seconded by Council Reposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Whereas a recent fire on High Street, a fire hydrant lost, at a recent fire on High Street, a fire hydrant lost water pressure, causing firefighters to secure another hydrant further away. And whereas fire hydrants are tested as often as there is manpower to do so, and whereas Fire, Fall River has many historical buildings and fire hydrants adjacent to these properties should be tested semi-annually, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the fire chief and the administrative community utilities to discuss this very important matter.
Before I recognize Councilor in seat seven, who is the author of the resolution, I did make some calls to the fire department. Councilor, they already, each year, beginning in May through September, they test every hydrant. I was there when this happened. I spoke to the firefighter who, who had hooked up to that particular hydrant. Had it even been tested, it would have shown that it was working. It's, you know, it could be something that when they, when the pressure started, something got dislodged in the line to make it clog or not as useful as they needed it to be. But they are testing. Each engine gets a list of hydrants that they need to test every year. I would just caution you, I will not be supporting this as it is, because, one, they already do have a schedule, and it is a routine done every year. And, second, I would just caution that, you know, we're kind of, it seems to be prioritizing these particular houses, where I can't, I can't agree to prioritize any area of the city over, over another area. Councilor in seat seven?
I also talked to the chief. I had a lot of conversation with him, and the first time I talked to him, the information was a little different than the second time, because he had to talk to an officer who really handles this. And I think that they should be tested more frequently. They're no longer pressure-tested. They should be pressure-tested. So if that's something that we have to do, then you should do that. The only reason I put in was that about historic buildings, is because if you had a fire in your home and you lost everything that was precious to you as an individual, that's devastating. I've had a fire, so I know how, thank God I didn't lose a lot of stuff, but I know how it can be. However, the historical buildings we have, like the Historical Society, which was right near this, that's where the hydrant was closest to there. So if that building caught on fire, that has historic value of everything in this city. It's an entire community. So if you looked at the museums in the city, I don't think that there's anything wrong with checking them twice just to make sure we don't lose valuable, you know, history, that we don't lose that. I mean, there's, that's what I think. It's not that I take priority over these buildings than anybody else's, but these buildings are buildings of the community. The entire community owns these buildings, and I think that they should be pressure-tested. I don't think just testing the hydrant is enough. And when there's something wrong, they have to call the water department. Who's monitoring how quick the water department comes out and fixes it? It's not a system. You don't want to support it, that's fine, but that's why I filed the resolution. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat three, Council Vice President Dion?
Yeah, I also reached out to the fire department, because I thought we did do testing on a pretty regular basis. And I have to say, I do agree that historical buildings are important. Maintaining a record of history is important. However, if they don't have the ability, for whatever reason, whether it be manpower or whatever the case, to semi-annually test every fire hydrant in the city, my priority, and I'm not going to tell the fire department how to do their job, my priority would be to test the hydrants that are outside buildings that have living people in them first. You know, I'd hate to see, I'd hate to see, even though it's important, somebody's home burned down and somebody die rather than lose an artifact. That's just me, and with that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Councilor in seat one?
So I'll go ahead and support this. I think, number one, if testing's being done on a yearly basis, then I think the appropriate measures are being, are taking place. However, from my standpoint, I would hope that when this goes to public safety, that we just look at it from one additional standpoint, which is the technology aspect of the testing and the documentation. So we have a GIS software, so I'd like to see when we're doing the testing, that it's going into the system and that we're looking potentially in the future, making sure that all the, either the tough books or the laptops or the handhelds that are going into either the police cruises or the fire trucks or the engines or the rescues, that they're able to pull up the GIS and see where the next hydrant is. In the event that the hydrant isn't working, whether it's a lack of pressure, they can quickly, you know, look it up to see which ones are working, which ones are out of order, how much pressure are coming out of which hydrants, in the event that they need to have a certain pressure coming out of the hydrant. So from my standpoint, I think, you know, the discussion itself could benefit, and just in terms of the council trying to be more supportive in terms of technology and the use of technology that we currently have to help support our public safety departments. So I will say, sometimes it's how they hook up the hydrant that would, you know, cause the pressure to not be where it is. It could be the engine as well, you know, there's a number of things. But I, I would hope that the fire chief and the fire department and the water department are working together to, to ensure that, you know, all our fire hydrants, whether it's historical homes or single families or multifamilies, are being checked at least on a yearly basis. And if, you know, the standards is that they should be checked twice a year, then we need to figure out how we can get them, the resources, to make sure those, those are checked twice a year. So I will support it, but I just hope that we have a little bit more of a broader conversation in terms of how we can kind of improve to make sure that we're using a little bit more of our technology. With that, I yield. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat three, Council Vice President Dionne.
Through the chair, to the Counselor in seat one. So would that require a bit of an amendment to it?
I don't, I don't think so.
Because I think you're bringing it to a.
No, I would, I would just ask whoever's on, on public safety to just add, ask about the technology aspect of, of GIS. I mean, we have a, a GIS mapping system that can be used for a number, a host of things. And I think it just, it's, it's only as good as the information that's being inputted, right? So I, I think that's part of the discussion, just to, to have that topic, you know, talked about with the hydrants. I mean, I don't think anything necessarily needs to come of it, other than a discussion to see what we need to do, and maybe another resolution. If those folks at the table, whoever the stakeholders are, determine that, that's a good idea, or we're starting to do that, we need a little bit more funding for it, then at least we can put a resolution to have further conversations about it.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? I would be happy to support this if that section on prioritizing the historic buildings was taken out. I agree with Counselor in, in seat one. If there was an amendment in that nature, then I would be happy to support it. Otherwise, if there's nothing further.
I don't really care. If you wanna take a line out, take a line out. But I just get calls from people all day long, trying to get things moving in this city, filing resolutions like water lately, because I just wanna see things move. You wanna with, you know, with, take that line out, whereas the closures of, causes traffic delay, no. If you wanna take that out, that it's not for historic buildings, fine. I'll make a motion, take that out. Just let's keep moving. With that, I yield.
Motion to amend and.
Second.
Delete line three, made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kadim. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended, made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Lee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you.
Whereas there's currently a good deal of road construction, causing many streets to be temporarily closed. And whereas these closures cause traffic delays for residents commuting to school and work, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Works and Transportation convene to discuss ways to keep residents informed of daily street closures.
I'll talk on it.
The sponsor of the resolution, Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pereira.
I think this had been brought up before, too, in a previous resolution. I think you had brought it up in a previous resolution. I, I find that the utility companies that are doing roadwork, they're very good. They, every morning, they have on WSAR what roads are being closed. But I'm getting calls from school bus drivers and people, how can we find out what roads are getting closed? Can we put it on the website? Can we run it on the strip along Channel Nine or Channel Eighteen? So that people know. I mean, the woman that was a bus driver said, if I knew, I could reroute myself, and I gotta make sure the kids get to school on time. Whether it's, you know, I mean, that's, that's the only thing. People need to know. And sometimes, some people have a dedicated phone line that you can just call, and there's a message, on this day, this day, these roads will be closed. And I just think that people wanna know. And, like I said, the utility companies do a good job, but we're doing other work as well, and we're not doing such a good job. I would've liked to known tonight, when I got here, that we were gonna be blocked off, and there was gonna be no parking over here. I would've left my house earlier, but I didn't know that.
Counselor, I would, I would agree with you on that. This was actually before us. It was a resolution I put in back in October. It was passed unanimously and sent to the administration. Unfortunately, nothing was done with it at that time. And, and the reason for that resolution was that, if you remember, there was all types of work being done on Robeson Street.
Right.
Multiple streets, and the resolution spoke to residents, businesses, bus drivers, taxi drivers. Our public safety, police, fire, and EMS, they get an update every morning of road closures, because they, they need to know what streets are closed and which aren't. So we have the information. We spoke again to the administration, Council Vice President and I did, and asked that this be made a priority and it be put on the, the website. Unfortunately, our website is not the best, and they are in the process of revamping it. We're told it will be done by the end of summer. But I fully support this resolution again, and hopefully that will be done sooner rather than later. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
So I was gonna make the same statement with regard to communications and dispatch center getting notifications. So if there is a concern about the buses, can we just have whoever's sending the information to dispatch just also send it to the school departments, to figure out who the point of contact is for transportation, send over the same list, so that at least, you know, the transportation department on the school side can just forward it over to the vendors on a, on a daily basis? I mean, that, I know that doesn't alleviate all of it, but I, I think if, if that's some of the disconnect, then I think we just add a point of contact, so that they know what road closures are on a daily basis. Now, whether the school provides that to the, to the vendors, that's, that's up to the schools.
So the administration is here, if you would like to hear from them, Counselor?
No, I think, I think you heard what I had to say, so with that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? All those in favor?
Aye.
It wasn't adopted.
Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Reposo.
That's okay.
I apologize.
It's all right. Along the lines about the website, I'm just curious, in this, in this new bill that we're doing, is there any way that, other than just posting it on the website, that we can get it out as far as notification to residents that are affected? I don't know if there's like a push notification system or something along those lines that we can look into?
So I will tell you again, the administration is here, if you would like to have that conversation.
Motion to have a.
Motion to waive the rules made by Counselor Reposo, seconded by Counselor Vice President Dionne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Attorney Aiken.
So I know, I know, we've talked about it before, in, in brief, about, you know, the website and all, all have you. But I think one thing, we talk about communication, there's no infrastructure in place to be able to communicate. You know, obviously, Channel Seventeen's nice and all, but it's, that's not the best way we communicate anymore. So is there anything considered as far as like push notifications or anything? Because I know full well, I show up at the school at quarter past seven in the morning, and both sides of Everett and Alden are closed, and I go, okay, now what? So it's, it's kind of a surprise. So how, what can we do to make this better?
So I will say that the agreement to have the website built by a premier developer, nationally premier developer, happened this week. So the award letter literally was drafted yesterday. So that's by way of saying that the website can have whatever we want in it, because we are very much at the beginning stages of, of developing. We've interviewed a number of developers, all with national reputations for building city and town websites. So these, this is not just a, kind of a fly-by-night, you know, some guy that likes to build websites. This is first-class operation that is going to have the capability for a unified calendar and for the end-users in each department to continuously update their sites, but also have those updates approved and, and vetted. And I'm only speaking to the site this specifically, as a way of telling you that there are huge opportunities here to vastly improve the way that we communicate. We intend to do that. And so my intention is for there to be literally every opportunity for residents of the City of Fall River to remain informed, to understand what's happening in this city, both with regard to road closures and, and everything else. And that's something that we're gonna be working really, really hard on for the next several months.
And in that same vein, is there a way to maybe gather some public input about what are the things city residents are looking to get information about, and that they currently cannot access, that would be good to include in this bill?
So that's been part of the, the conversation internally, as well as with the developers, that, that this site, in order for it to be useful, has to have a tremendous amount of, of not just public buy-in, but public input. And that includes public competitions for imagery. We wanna solicit from the public images that can be part of the website, all the way to actual public input as to what they need to see and what they wanna be able to use, and how they wanna be able to use it in terms of access.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Pelletier.
Yeah, we, we do have a couple of girls in transportation. They know all the routes, they set everything up. And I think if the day before, or if they notify them, they could notify the bus drivers. I mean, they're there, all the kids are being picked up, so that pot's all set. We're just gonna let the girls know, they can notify them, hey, they're closing this street, they're closing this street. Every bus driver knows which street they're going on and what they would have to do. So maybe that's an easier way to, to let them go. But most of the time, I find out, when the streets are closed and when the traffic's all backed up, and I take a shortcut, that's, oh, they're fixing the street up. That's right. Today, I was notified today about government center. My wife come in and says, you can't pop there today. She said, oh, everything's around, so it's another avenue. So I tank Debbie with that. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat three, Council Vice President.
So I just have a one question. So when the new website is up and running, when residents are looking for information that has to do with the city council, anything relevant to city council business, city ordinances, et cetera, will they be able to find us under government, or will we still be a department?
I feel like that was a rhetorical question.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Counselor in seat seven.
Honestly, with all this new technology, this council should have a subcommittee, even if it's added on to some committee of technology. Because clearly, if they're gonna be doing a website, I'd like to give some opinion into that, because the last time they redesigned our website, it's not very user-friendly.
No, it's terrible.
And I, you know, that would be some discussion to have. And, you know, listening to what Counselor Reposo said, that sometime, you know, people wanna be involved and wanna give information. So I don't know if you're gonna stop that, if we could look at doing something like that, just a thought. That way, I don't have to file a resolution on it next week to say, you know, two weeks, do you think we should do this? But I've had a normal week. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Reposo.
And just to follow that, I'll, I'll volunteer myself. If, if the administration's interested, I could be a part of that process to facilitate that, if that would be helpful to you.
And now that you volunteer, the road closures might stop around your school, so, thank you.
Don't say it too loudly.
I'm just kidding.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, made by Council Vice President Dionne, seconded by Counselor Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Madam Clerk, before you go to the next one, I just wanted to make a point. Counselor Pereira has two resolutions, and both have been in front of the council previously, and no outcome has been had. So I did ask the clerks, Counselor Pereira, to give me a copy of everything that the prior council had sent to the administration, so that the clerks and I, the Council Vice President and the administration could, can go through it. There's quite a lot of things that we sent and find out what became of everything that the, the prior council sent to the administration. So that is being worked on. Madam Clerk.
Whereas benches and large concrete planters were installed this past spring in the pedestrian walkway of the Hudna Building, which is an elderly and disabled housing and urban development property. And whereas this area has become a haven for drugs and undesirable behavior. And whereas this is causing an unsafe environment for the residents and their visitors, causing them to fear for their safety. And whereas this outdoor area is now littered with cigarette butts, nip bottles, overflowing trash receptacles, and a constant odor of urine and marijuana, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene to discuss ways to improve the safety of this area.
Counselor in seat seven, the sponsor of the resolution.
I received a letter from the Hudna Building Piedmont, as we all did. And, you know, the majority of residents at that building are either disabled individuals or elderly individuals. And I think that putting benches, et cetera, there was a good intent to do it. But they're afraid after to walk in, because you walk in by the back if you're visiting, because that's where the, the keypad is. Or if you're in a wheelchair or a scooter, you have to use that entrance to get in. And I, I think we should look at it. I don't know what else we can do. It's unfortunate that we try to beautify an area, make something look nicer, and then you have a small percentage of people that go and destroy it. You know, drinking nip bottles and smoking pot there, urinating. I think Danny Robelad lives there, and I know he's here tonight. But, you know, you should try to talk to him and see some of the things that he's been experiencing. I just think we need to look at it. With that, I yield.
Thank you. The Council Vice President and myself did also meet with the administration and spoke about this today, and I believe the city administrator does have an update on this.
Thank you, Madam President. So just for some context, the owner of that property has been very regularly contacting the, the Chief of Staff about his concerns about the alleged problem with people drinking and doing drugs and homeless people in that old Second Street area that, where we put the planters and the benches. The unfortunate thing is, is that when I did the research into his complaints, and this is now months ago, there were no police calls to this. This really amounts to, in my view, kind of a not-in-my-backyard concern. And I get that. I, I think we all want the places we own to have the very best surroundings and reputation. But the problem that is being raised here, as far as I can tell, is not a real problem. And so I, I certainly understand that somebody has written to the council and, and made a point. I don't know that that necessarily represents the broader reality of what's happening in that area. And in fact, very recently, the, the one problem that we did notice was the fact that there's trash in that area. Not nip bottles, not marijuana cigarettes or residue or evidence thereof. And certainly not threatening homeless people, but trash. And so there is a resident that's actually been picking up and, and dealing with the trash. And we've actually paid him to do that, which is kind of a funny thing, but to do. But it's, it's something that he really enjoys and has been doing a great job. And at the same time, when need be, and he needs support in doing that, we've had DCM go over and, and support him in the trash removal effort. And so I would just, with respect, based upon the, the evidence that I was able to gather, trying to figure out how we might respond to this person's claim, I would just caution the council to, somebody I knew used to use a term, which is to pick a point and plot a curve. As you know, in geometry, a curve requires at least three points. To pick a single point and believe that we can plot a curve with that sometimes is, is premature and, and not appropriate. And in this case, I would tell you that the, that what we know, having looked at this seriously and trying to give this its due, this problem is not nearly as widespread and prevalent as it's being now to me.
Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pereira.
With all due respect, the owner of Piedmont property does not reside here.
That's true.
And the people that are complaining are the residents. They're complaining to the management office. And the people that have spoken to me, and Mr. Robelad's here. I wish that you would take the opportunity after this to speak to him. You know, sometimes people are afraid to call the police, too. You're not gonna say to somebody, I'm gonna call the police on you, and then you're afraid. And when you're in a vulnerable position, it becomes scary. Maybe more lighting, maybe there needs to be more security there. Are there other suggestions? You have a meeting, they can have a, a meeting there at the building. They have a conference room, a, a social room. They can have a public safety meeting there and let people know. If this is a problem, come in, call the police. Because they're drinking and doing everything there. And then we're gonna be doing the one across the street, the Jerry Lawton, right? We're gonna be fixing that up with upper money, I believe. Wasn't that one of them? Before, there were benches there. Because there was a problem, they took the benches out. Now, we haven't done anything to change that, but we're gonna put benches back. That makes no sense to me.
I, I understand, Counselor. My office overlooks that.
What is it?
My office overlooks that, so I, I actually look at it every day. I don't see that problem, but I'm certainly open to being wrong.
No, it's usually at night.
I understand.
It's usually more at night. And of course, when you're coming in at night. But honestly, Ms. Atkins, I, I'd have you talk to Danny and see what the resident there are feeling. And if they go there and they have a meeting with them, public safety, we don't have to have meetings here, subcommittee meetings. Public safety has often gone out to locations, and they can let the individuals know, you know, what we're doing, what things they could do to help curb the situation as well. Anyway, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further from the council? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to adopt, made by Counselor Pereira.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Whereas we have many veterans returning from recent deployment, and whereas Fall River has over 7,000 veterans and their dependents, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Fall River establish a Veterans Advisory Board pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 115, Section 12, and be it further resolved that the Advisory Board consist of five unpaid members, two of whom will be veterans, one Gold Star parent, one member of the War Veterans Council, and one from edu, the education sector, who will be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council.
Sponsor of the resolution, Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pereira.
I don't believe that this does have to go to ordinance. I don't believe that this does have to go to ordinance because it's state law. There's already a state statute on it. So my belief is it doesn't have to be there. I would then refer this to the administration because they're already working on one. Because if you look at the state statute, look at, you know, the membership, look at who's on the board. I do think that the mayor should appoint and the council should confirm the appointments. But I truly believe that seven people are enough. I put five, you said nine. We'll do seven. But I really believe a Gold Star parent has a right to be on there. And I wouldn't want that individual not to be there, somebody from education there, et cetera. And the three that are on the letter that we received from the mayor was yourself, Mrs. Brito, and a member of the council. We have members of the council that are liaisons to veterans. I would prefer not to be in an advisory capacity because they have their ability to be there. And you're going to be there. So I just don't think... I don't know if people are going to feel uncomfortable with having a council there. However, none of those are voting members of the Advisory Board as well.
Which I think is why we were thinking nine instead of seven, because once you take the three out, then there's your voting member. So that's... I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
And that's why I think the city administrator needs to hear all the sides. Needs to be able to hear the VSO, needs to be able to hear the veterans, needs to be able to hear the different perspectives.
I don't think that I would put that those are permanent positions. Because clearly, as a city administrator, you're not going to have the time to go to advisory board meetings of every advisory board in the city. So if it's for the interim, until things are put together a little, till people understand what different roles are and how things are changing, if they're changing, or what was done before. And I think there needs to be some of that going on. But I don't think you'll be there all the time because that would be... Unless you're a veteran and you like to be there all the time, then...
I am a veteran.
That's fine, too. So... But, you know, I would just suggest that this go to the administration. Make an amendment that this go to the administration, and the administration figure that out with the board. But again, I don't like to waste time. So if we could expedite this, it would be beautiful.
I feel like, with respect, I feel like the administration has already figured out what it wants to do. And if the council would like to make suggestions to amend that, certainly, I'm open to that.
Okay.
But that's, you know, the letter we sent. I guess I was saying it was proposed just out of respect, but at the end of the day, you know, the mayor's established the committee. If there's suggestions as to how the committee should be comprised in a better way, we're certainly open to that. That's important.
Well, I've given you my suggestions. My suggestion is that you limit it. And my suggestion is I definitely think a Gold Star parent should be there. That's how I feel. And there are other communities that have done it. I think CICON did it with three, just recently.
If I may, about the Gold Star parent, the problem there is not whether or not they should be on there. I would agree that there are very good arguments for including a Gold Star family member.
Right.
Parent unfortunately limits us to a very small number of people within the city. If we imagine that it's a Gold Star parent living in the city of Fall River, I think you're only talking about a fairly small number of people. If you said Gold Star family member, I actually think that's a broader group.
I'll give you that. Go with family.
Because I want it to be sustainable. Like, it's more, 10 years from now, I want us to be able to find somebody. Because you and I have had experiences where people have proposed boards. I think we're thinking of the same one, right? Where the positions were so prescribed that when you think about it, that once you exhaust the limited pool of people you have that fit that description, then you can't get anyone else to serve. So what I... If we can do Gold Star family member, I think that makes a lot of sense. We then have more people.
I'm fine with that. And I have copies of agendas from different advisory boards. And New Bedford, New Bedford has nine, not all nine show up all the time. But, you know, they do have nine. But it's the same thing. They have... And they just organize everything and keep things flowing, and I think that that's a good thing. I've given my suggestion. Other colleagues can call and give theirs. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. I just... I appreciate the resolution. I know that the mayor sent his communication down yesterday morning. My only issue with this one by Counselor Pereira is that the... Our Veterans Service Officer is not as a member of the committee on what this proposal is. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
She's on the committee.
The Mass. General Law states that this advisory board would be, in essence, working with...
With her, but she doesn't have a vote. That's the law.
So I feel this five-person panel that's in the Mass. General Law... And I got to ask you, mistaken, is this an extension of that, what your proposal is, what your office's proposal is? Is this an extension of that, adding four more people to what essentially is this Mass. General Law 115?
115, Section 12, I think allows up to, is it 15? I mean, it's a huge number for a board. It's kind of unwieldy. So this is sort of a happy medium, not because I would like there to be a big board of
I don't have a problem with that.
Five or seven veterans, plus the three administration. But more because I know that we have, you know, DAV that has 500 members. We have a number of ethnic affinity veterans groups. We have VFW, we have AMVETS, we have the War Council, which is an umbrella organization for 15 different veterans organizations. Some of which would, I've already talked about, would be... So once you start accounting for... And that's before you even get to folks that are involved in Pine Street, involved to homeless outreach to veterans.
Absolutely.
Involved in the Veterans Kitchen. Like, I mean, you could probably make a Veterans Association Committee of 25.
They may be funding, you know, conversation as well, where you want to leave it open for something like that as well, which is understandable. So I don't have a problem with the number that the office is proposing. However, I do agree with Counselor Pereira regarding having a Gold Star family member. And I agree with you making it more broader so that way we can actually have a wider net for representation. I also, I feel it's already going to be a given, but members of the War Council should be on this as well. I feel like, you know, that's... It wasn't said exactly, but I really do feel, obviously, that they... The reason why we're doing this is based on the fact that the War Council right now and the VSO's offices, you know, there's a lot of turmoil right now between the two. And I think we need to have something like this to smooth it out. It's not what I was thinking of when I was thinking of this board in the beginning, but obviously, we need that now. You know, it's just very clear. But going forward, are we going to... Is the public going to have a sort of a mission statement from the mayor's office as to what this board is set out to do? So that way, we have an idea and guidance, at least an initial guidance, as to what this board is going to do and what it's trying to accomplish, however often they meet. And are the meetings going to be public?
So my initial answer would be no. And the reason for that is I believe 115, Section 12, actually gives a very clear mission statement for what the advisory board should be doing.
Okay.
That said, if there needs to be a statement of purpose from the advisory board that would give everyone a better sense of what the kind of local focus is going to be of that board, I think it's something that, once the board is constituted, they can certainly publish.
I just think it's very general. Obviously, Mass. General Law, it's very general for the state level. But obviously, I think we need to know how this is going to serve Fall River specifically and how it's connecting. I was hoping for something that would bridge the gap between what's going on federally and statewide, and how we can sort of get that information to the board and to other veterans as to what we should be, in some cases, what we should be supporting, you know, when it comes to certain bills and things like that.
I think my reaction to that, to some extent, is based on myself as an attorney. Where I feel like, once you give a mission or a statement or a rule to something,
It locks you in.
You're bound by it.
Yeah.
And when somebody's already given a more general set of guidelines, I think that gives us the flexibility that we want for this board to be able to sort of go in the direction that Fall River veterans needed to go in.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Vice President Deont.
Yeah, the only comment I was going to make is that in terms of the liaison, the veterans liaison on the city council, I think in light of the fact, especially where we happen to have a liaison who's also a veteran, I think that can be an important role moving forward. Who knows whether the next liaison would be a veteran or not? But, I mean, they bring a certain expertise to the seat. And so for that reason, I would support the nine member having one of the three being a liaison from the city council. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
So the only question I have is the... I think the initial conversation was that there was a letter that came down from the administration, just letting us know that the mayor has put together an advisory committee. And then we've got Counselor Pereira who submitted something. So are we looking to establish this committee long-term? Not to suggest that the administration is long-term, but are we looking to establish it in ordinance so it becomes similar to Parks and Recs and all the other committees that have been established through ordinance and Mass. General Law?
I'm looking at having it permanently. However, I'm being told that because there's a state law already, there's no reason for an ordinance because we refer to state law, Chapter 115, Section 12, to get that.
But I guess the only difference would be that I think your resolution was looking to have some confirmation, right, from the city council?
Yes.
Is that... So I think if it's an advisory and it's just coming from the mayor, then the city council doesn't have any authority for confirmation. So I guess that's... That would be the difference, so...
Then I would amend it to go to the ordinance committee. The mayor is putting together a plan that he thought. You have my resolution of what I thought, and you heard from some of our colleagues. I'll make a motion to refer to ordinance.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Yeah, that's fine, because I'm comfortable with what was submitted down to the... By the administration. I agree with, you know, the makeup. I think it made a lot of sense.
Yeah.
It's just whether or not we want to establish, and if
An ordinance, pardon.
we wanted city council confirmation on a couple of members or all the members. I'm not sure what the intent of the resolution initially was.
Point of information?
Counselor?
When you were speaking earlier, I believe I heard you say that you would be amendable to it being in ordinance if that was the direction that the council wanted it to go in.
I did say that. I will say that I do agree with Counselor Pereira that it's already mass state law allowed. I think that what the mayor sent down basically says, "I'm doing this," under an advisory capacity, which he has the authority to do without council approval. And so I guess the question is, you know, you never want to create a tension between two legal bodies. But if the mayor moves forward and constitutes this body in the next 10 days, which I think he intends to do, probably not finish, but begin soliciting names and nominations for who would be on the board in order to get that board up and running in the next 30 days. And then this goes through ordinance, and then ordinance establishes... Does that invalidate the advisory board the mayor started? I don't know that it does. I just think it actually creates two boards. And so I don't want to create something... I don't want to move forward on something that is going to be illogical, but at the same time, I don't want to delay. I think this needs to happen sooner rather than later, and I think the mayor, in this regard, does have the authority to do it.
Counselor Kadeem, you still have the floor?
Personally, I... One way or the other, I really don't care. I think if the committee's going to be established, then I'm okay with, you know, just letting it play out and making sure that the committee is established in accordance with what the mayor's said. And then if they're meeting regularly, then we don't have an issue. I think when it stops or we start to hear problems, then maybe we come back and truly establish it in ordinance to say... And it's only one committee, and obviously, whoever's on would be grandfathered in at that point, I guess, if we discussed it. But just to officially make sure that it's something that is there, that, you know, when this administration leaves, we're not losing sight that this, you know, this committee should continue from one administration to the other, just like the Park Board, Licensing Board, Board of Health, you know, Conservation, ZBA, all that. So either way, I just wanted to get some clarification on it. That's all. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pereira.
You know, the only reason I put this in was because I had already talked to the administration about putting this together. And I knew that the administration could put it together, as it has put it together. But then you had COVID, you had all these other things that came into play, and it kind of sat on a shelf. And I knew that there was going to be some animosity when you get changes in direction. And it ended up heightening to what has, and we're trying to deal with that. But I just want it to be done right away. I don't care if you don't want to send it to ordinance, or you want to send it to ordinance later, whatever. I personally would like to see it televised. We televise all our meetings. Why not that one? Just my thought. But with that, I yield.
Tony Aiken, you seem to be quite amendable to comments and suggestions on the makeup of this committee. Is that still the will of the administration to take that into consideration?
To take the ordinance route into consideration?
No, to take the suggestions from counselors on the makeup of the committee?
Oh, absolutely. No, I fully intend to make sure that there is a Gold Star family as part of it. We'll probably even send out a subsequent communication, making this a little bit more specific, but still leaving it broad enough where if there are organizations... Here's the thing, I'm cognizant of the fact that there are some veterans organizations that only have a few members, simply because the members are getting older, as difficult as that is to acknowledge, it just is. There are other organizations that may not want to be part of this, simply because they don't go along with another organization. I mean, there's any number of reasons why we... The more we try to identify exactly who should fit into what slot, it becomes more difficult. So I'd like to keep it fairly open. I think the Gold Star family member makes a lot of sense. I really would like a city council member, but I certainly understand the reasons not to. And I believe the city administrator does have a role on that because even though the VSO has a tremendous responsibility with regard to the administration of benefits, the city administrator is going to be able to talk to the mayor about policy with regard to veterans, about how we can not just take care of veterans in an active and real way, but also in the representational way, by making sure that we're at the different ceremonies and parades. And so that's why I think the city administrator is an important piece of that. So I'm absolutely amendable to the suggestions. I would prefer it not be televised because I think, especially when it comes to veterans, there are a lot of incredibly difficult issues that do come up that beg a certain level of privacy for the veterans. There's ways around that, but that's my concern. And I want to preserve the dignity of each and every veteran as much as I possibly can.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
No, so I was just going to speak a little bit more about the logistics in terms of what Counselor in seat seven had brought up with just the televising. So it begs the question, so if it's advisory appointed by the mayor, it technically doesn't have to follow the open meeting law? So it can almost be like a steering committee unless Chapter 115 specifically says that it has to, which I don't think it does. But if it was established in ordinance, since it's being established through us, then that would require that committee to file, follow the open meeting law. So they would have to do postings, it'd have to be to the public. So that's, I guess, what do we... And I think I heard what you just said. So just to get a little bit more confirmation, so you're trying to go down a road where it doesn't necessarily need to be public so you can have more, I guess, confidential discussion, not trying to hide anything, but be fully transparent, but be able to have those, I guess, more confidential or, I guess...
Sensitive.
Sensitive, thank you. Discussions that may need to be taken place for the committee. Is that...
Yes, sir.
Were you looking... Because if you do the open meeting law, because I don't think there would be... There's 10 reasons to go in the executive session, and I don't think there's any...
That's right.
I don't think any of the 10 will apply to the specific committee, so everything would have to be aired out and open. So, okay.
And I think the most vulnerable position that a VSO can be in is not knowing when there's veterans in need in the community. And veterans organizations and leaders of veterans organizations are in the best possible position to make sure a VSO knows when there's a veteran who is going to lose their home, or lose their benefits, or lose, you know, not get the medical care they need. And every single one of those is a very challenging conversation. We need to be able to talk about who those people are, where they are, and what they need, and preserve their dignity at the same time.
Okay. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pereira, did you have your hand up again?
Yeah, the agendas that I looked at had nothing like that personal. The agendas that I looked at was just to plan different events, to discuss things that were coming up, to discuss fundraisers that they were having. There was nothing about... The advisory board should not be a board where people are going to talk about a specific individual or a specific item. If you want to talk about what are the rules for 115, talk about that. You know, how do you come and apply for this? And, you know, advise us on how do we apply for certain things. The reason I thought it should be on television, you just said yourself, many of our veterans are getting on in age. And many of them want to watch. And their home, they could watch it. That's all. Not that I think they're going to do something they shouldn't do, but at least they could watch it. And they're being informed, too. You have an advisory board that's talking... You have an advisory board that's talking about whatever services, you know, how do you get an annuity? You know, what about getting disabled, different percentages of disability? Well, then you'd go to the DAV, you'd do something there. Do you know what I mean? It's a way, too, to let people know.
I do.
I don't think that it would ever be talking about specific people or specific issues. It's more advisory in nature to, and I think it's something like that, if it was personal, you would say, you know, that you can't talk about that here. You would tell them. But you work on it, and we'll see what we can do.
Counsel Pereira, I would suggest that, I understand your thoughts, and there would be veterans watching from home. I'm not sure how much personal information would be at a meeting such as this. I would advise that we do send this to ordinance at your meeting tomorrow, that the both of you will be there. You have conversations with the veterans that are there, see what they would like the makeup of the committee to be, and see how they feel about it being televised, rather than not televised. If they prefer it be televised, it's already in ordinance. We can go that route. If they don't want it to be televised?
We can pull it.
We can, certainly.
Yeah, that's fine.
Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pereira. Palatier, sorry.
Six.
Six.
As the administration, well, you must feel there's a problem you want to abort, but the administration sit down with the head of the vets to talk about this? I mean.
Repeatedly.
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
And what's the response?
There are, there are no doubts, some personality tensions, and I understand both perspectives from both the VSO and her concerns, as well as the concerns of the leaders of the different veterans organizations. You know that I respect you a great deal.
You do.
But I, very much. But I think that some of the comments you made at the start don't have all the information. I think there's a lot of information here that, that is, it goes much deeper than simply, you know, somebody saying, "This person's not doing his or her job." I think that change is really hard, especially for veterans who have been used to a certain way for a long time. And we're a city where we want people to, and we want people to do things correctly, and we often lament why things haven't been done correctly in the past. But then sometimes, when somebody comes in to change something, and to try to do it in the way that they think is correct, they get destroyed. And I think Michaela's been in a very difficult position, and even though there are things that, as she's learning, I mean, let's keep in mind, she's been in the position less than a year. There's things she's learning that I know, she knows she can do better and continue to work on. I think there's ways that she could be met halfway. On the other hand, I think that, you know, it's a difficult thing, because we're dealing with people's benefits, we're dealing with a group of people who take a great deal of pride in things that they've done and choices they've made in their lives. I know I've made many of the same choices, and it's not something I really think about or talk about a lot, but when I do, I'm proud of having done it. It was a hard thing. So all that said, is I think there are some, there are some sort of personal things here between the veterans and the VSO that are, that are difficult to work through, but need to be worked through, because it's not just as simple as one person's bad and the other group is good. It's not that simple.
She was doing the right job, there'd be no problem whatsoever.
I disagree.
Well, I think she's independent, she does what she wants, and she'll tell you right off, go someplace else. That's the feedback that I get, and I assume that the mayor gets the same feedback, and that's why he wants this, and that's what it should be. Of course, she's not, she won't agree to this.
She already has.
Oh, she did?
Yes, sir.
All right, well.
She wants, she wants this to work, and she wants to serve veterans.
She almost can write her ticket out of this place, if I was unconcerned.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Repouzou.
Is there a motion on the floor yet to refer to ordinance?
There is not. It would need to be amended.
Do an amendment to refer to ordinance as well, and send one to administration.
Motion so made.
Motion to amend to refer to ordinance.
I don't know if we had an emotion to adopt yet.
That's what was.
We need to amend it and then adopt it. Correct? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
So a motion to amend to refer to ordinance made by Counsel Repouzou, seconded by Counsel Pereira. Any discussion on the motion to amend?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt is amended.
Motion adopted, amendment made by Counsel Repouzou, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next order of business.
Whereas recent developments regarding the Fall River Police Department have once again cast a negative light, and whereas this has left another mark of shame and loss of confidence within our community, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council Committee on Finance meet in executive session on April 26th with the Chief of Police, President of the Fall River Police Superior Officers Association, Local 1844 Union, and President of the Fall River Police Association, Mass Cop, Local 1854 Union, to discuss this crucial
Counselor in seat seven, sponsor of the resolution.
I'll be honest with you, I don't think this is going to pass.
No.
I don't think it's going to pass. But I'm going to tell you what I think. There's something going on in the police department. We have many good officers in the police department, and every time I turn around, there's something on TV, this one's getting banged, that one's getting, it's horrible, and it's disgusting to them, listening to union people on both sides, and I have spoke to the chief as well. I just think we need to do something. People need to know what's going on. Again, we're probably going to have more lawsuits with all of this that's going on, but with all due respect to my colleagues, it's been a long night, I filed a lot of resolutions. I know this isn't going to pass, I just feel it. So, motion leave to withdraw.
There were counselors that had their hands raised to speak.
Oh, go ahead.
Did you want to, could you withdraw that motion?
She seconded it.
Counsel, was there a second?
No. I didn't see it.
Counsel Pereira.
I'm giving motion leave to withdraw to this. You want to talk about it first? Okay, go ahead.
You withdraw the motion for now?
Huh?
You withdraw the motion for now?
Well, I didn't get a second, so I really don't have anything to withdraw, Madam President.
Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President Deion.
Yeah, my only comment is, the only reason that I wouldn't support this is because there isn't anything that meets the criteria for the purpose of executive session. So that would be the one and only reason why I wouldn't support this, and I feel it wouldn't pass. It just doesn't meet the criteria. With that, I yield.
Thank you. It is also an ongoing investigation, so I'm not sure how much could even be said by the chief in executive session, and I'm not sure that having the chief and the union heads in the same meeting is the best idea, but motion leave to withdraw made by Counsel Pereira, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel.
Let me just add this. Whereas the destruction, misplaced, or mishandling of evidence could potentially lead to criminal or civil actions for the city, its employees, and department head, so under one in five of executive session, it would meet the criteria. But leave to withdraw, there's a second. Ready to vote.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have just one person voting?
Most would vote aye.
The ayes have it. Next order of business.
Have the order granting permission to Mass Electric Company for an underground conduit and new solely-owned pole location at Airport Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion adopt made by Counsel Repouzou, seconded by Counsel Pereira.
Thank you, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 14 is the order granting permission to Michael Tupin at 452 Oak Grove Avenue for permission to remove curbing.
Motion adopt with the recommended conditions, as stated by the city engineer.
Motion adopt with recommended conditions, made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Vice President Deion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 15 is an order scheduling a hearing for April 26th for a new license to operate an auto repair shop at 1030 Dwelly Street.
Motion so made.
Motion adopt made by Counsel Repouzou.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Vice President Deion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ayes have it. Item 16 is the police chief's report.
Motion to adopt.
Motion adopt made by Counsel Vice President Deion.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Repouzou. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Item 17 is an application for a taxi cab license on behalf of Fall River Taxi Service.
Motion so made.
Motion adopt made by Counsel Repouzou, seconded by Counsel Lee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Have an auto body shop license renewal.
Motion so made. Second.
Motion adopt made by Counsel Repouzou, seconded by Counsel Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have an auto repair shop license renewal.
Motion so made.
Motion adopt made by Counsel Repouzou.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Kadeem. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have a number of claims.
Motion to forward to Corporation Council.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council, made by Counsel Repouzou, seconded by Counsel Vice President Deion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have a communication from Hoyle, Tanner, and Associates regarding the Jefferson Street[1668.92]